I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council regular meeting of April 11th, 2022. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. And, okay. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record in the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Councilmember Yurin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein.
Here.
Mayor Grisanti.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Okay, will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a, an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Mayor, could, I asked if we could adjourn in the memory of Helene Pearson. She was my stepmom and really my mom for the last 20 years and a long time. Big Rock resident and I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Paul, may I also add Inga Bumbach, the security guard who passed away at the Tranca Center.
Thank you very much, Karen. Any other thoughts?
Okay. Besides that, I'll second it if it hasn't been.
It hasn't been, but we are making notes and I'm searching wildly for my pen. Excuse me just a second. Okay. Very good. Do we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Would you like me to call the roll on that approval first?
I think that would be a great idea.
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein.
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti.
Yes.
Motion carries and I can give you that report on the posting of the agenda. The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 1st, 2022.
Thank you. Do we have any ceremonial presentations? I think we do.
You do have a proclamation to present and we have an ambassador here from One Life Legacy. I'm sorry, looking for his name. It was Bob Thompson.
Okay, if I may, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts organized worldwide, recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need and whereas more than 106 individuals, 106,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant list awaiting, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting and whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities and whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. And whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others and deceased organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives last year, the most ever. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of the age or medical conditions and being registered as a donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Malibu, the city council of the city of Malibu declares April 2022 as National Donate Life Month in Malibu and in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online when applying for renewing their driver's license or ID card at the DMV. And this is the proclamation. And do we have the recipient there to...
This is Bob. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council for recognizing April to be Donate Life Month on behalf of One Legacy and the One Legacy ambassadors. We really appreciate you getting behind this and as you had said earlier, there's over 100,000 people nationwide that are on the transplant list. I've been involved with organ donation since 1985 when my youngest brother, 15 at the time, died in a tragic accident, so this is my way of memorializing his, his legacy, but it means a lot to me and fellow One Legacy members, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. That brings us to item 2A. Communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda but for which the city council has subject matter jurisdiction. City council may not act on these matters except to refer the matters to staff or schedule the matters for a future agenda. Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, you have 24 speakers signed up for this item. The first few are Avideh Hagihi, Scott Morris, Will Wright, and Ellie Summerfield. We'll hear from Avideh first.
That's... Is Avideh there?
Avideh, you should see a pop, there you go. Avideh, you are unmuted. If you're ready to speak.
I am here. Hi, sorry about that.
We're listening.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Avideh Hagihi. I am a practicing architect based out of Los Angeles. I'm also on the steering committee of AIA California's Climate Action Committee. On behalf of nearly 11,000 architects in California, we are in strong support of a low-carbon concrete code for Malibu. We know that the manufacturing of building materials is the source of about 20% of global greenhouse gas emissions and we know that concrete production contributes 11% of those emissions. We understand that California's building codes and standards currently lack robust provisions to lower embodied emissions in building materials. And we strongly believe that there's an urgency for local jurisdictions like the city of Malibu to adopt reach codes specifically focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions from concrete. There are a number of cities, as you may know, that have already adopted reach codes similar to this one, mainly Marin County, city of Portland, and Vancouver. And we believe that Malibu City really has an opportunity here to lead in Southern California. In addition to the letter that AIA California sent to the council recently to show our support, we also understand that USGBC Los Angeles and the Sierra Club have thrown their full support behind this as well. And additionally, AIA California would be happy to provide assistance on policy formation and code language drafting to help with this transition for the city. I appreciate your time and thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Avideh.
Our next speaker is Scott Morris, followed by Will Wright, Ellie Summerfield, and Loretta Weinberg.
Hi, Scott. Are you available?
Mr. Morris. Honorable council members and Mayor Grisanti. I think Alex was going to put some, some media up on the screen. Thank you, Alex. The code is super straightforward. There's just this table. It tells you how much Portland cement you can use. Staff time is minimal and done at the same time as plan check. No special inspectors needed. At the time, building plans are submitted, the staff can review it then. Alex, next. Then there's this form. It's very easy for the local building official. It's, they basically check the number in table A and that's 362 pounds of Portland cement. And then, and then they make sure that it's lower than what the code allows. There's no special inspection onsite needed by the city on job sites. And it's just the same case as it is now with regular concrete. Alex, next. As a builder, it's very easy to pass code. This Malibu case study shows the builder was... Oh, Alex, you should be on the yellow tip. The builder was 20 to 30 pounds under the Portland cement limit, so he passed with flying colors. Malibu could even consider tightening the limits or leave them. But supply is everywhere. All the ready-mix producers around us, around Malibu, there's about five I could think of that have this. Just like with cement. And Alex, next. So we're asking the city council members to approve a motion, not to approve the code, but just approve a motion, instructing staff to report back within 90 days with a plan for the implementation. A lot of times, a group asks for some ordinance to implement without taking into account staff's time and availability. Not in this case. The added plan check is extremely easy and prescriptive. Ciosk has been extremely supportive and reaching out to Orlando over the past months and they have offered to train staff. Alex, next. So we are, we are creating some urgency. We call it zero, can't wait. There's nobody in some back room handling this and addressing embodied carbon emissions and low-carbon concrete. It's, it's us. It's the people in this room that have the ability to lead. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris.
And our next speaker would be Will Wright, but I don't see him in the meeting, so we'll try to circle back and we'll hear from Ellie Summerfield, followed by Loretta Weinberg and Brian Race.
Hello, are you available?
I am. I want to address this to Councilman Silverstein. My name is Ellie Summerfield. I will be 92 next month and I've lived in Malibu for 30 years. I love to read Bert Ross's column. Each week, I look forward for the Malibu Times to be delivered and I read Bert's column first. I often cut out the column and send it to friends of mine who live out of town. I am not alone. Many of my friends also enjoy Bert's column. It's good to laugh, especially when we're going through such sad times. I gather you find Bert's column humorless. You're certainly entitled to your opinion, but I have no idea why you, as a public official, needs to attack Bert's column. And by the way, I've been reading his column for years and I may be getting older, but I don't recall his humor columns ever serving some kind of political agenda. I may be wrong, but it seems like all you do is put down others. I was taught at an early age that if you don't have anything nice to say about somebody, don't say anything at all. You may want to think about following this advice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ellie.
Our next speaker is Loretta Weinberg, followed by Brian Race, Doug Stewart, and Juan Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Malibu Council. My name is Loretta Weinberg and I am recently retired as the Senate Majority Leader of the New Jersey State Senate. And I appreciate being able to come to you from 3,000 miles away in New Jersey. But I am also a California girl. I'm a graduate of Beverly Hills High School and UCLA. But more than that, I am proud to call Bert Ross my friend. I have known Bert for many decades now and I don't know anybody who is more honest or courageous. He has set the gold standard in New Jersey for what a public official should be. And for the mayor and council, in case you don't know, and to you particularly, Councilmember Silverstein, I could not believe my eyes to read an article in which you actually questioned Bert's integrity. Your comments would have been laughable were it not for the fact that you actually were serious. You do know, I'm assuming, that Bert turned down a half a million dollar bribe, wore a wire in connection with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, was put into a witness protection program and testified in federal court, sending people to jail for bribery. And to have a former, a public official who was a friend, who is somebody that we in New Jersey look up to, to have his integrity questioned, really made me feel that I wanted to address the Malibu Council. I always thought that New Jersey politics was tough. But after this, I must say that Malibu is running a close second. I hope that each and every one of you will take the time to thank Bert Ross for the work he's done to make you smile in Malibu, to be a proud Malibu resident because we in New Jersey miss him. Thank you very much and thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Senator.
Our next speaker is Brian Race, followed by Doug Stewart, Juan Gonzalez, and Rosemary Ide.
Brian, are you available?
Yes, I am. Hi, everyone. My name is Brian Race. I'm a sustainability planner with Marin County. We developed and implemented a low-carbon concrete code since 2019. So I'm calling to support and encourage council to pursue and study what a low-carbon concrete horse would look like within the 90 days that Scott Morris had stated. So just wanted to share some of our experiences with everyone here in developing our code as one of the first in the nation and getting stakeholder engagement and buying and implementing. So first, we had a robust stakeholder engagement, which was critical to the development, development of a right-sized code. And truly, it appears that the Malibu community, I'm super impressed, has engaged thoroughly and has gone deep in their due diligence. Second, there were certainly challenges and growing pains in developing and implementing our code for our staff. But the good thing is that many can learn from us and I have been and I'm still willing to share learning lessons, to hurdle and anticipate those potential challenges. In terms of enforcement, we did have some initial concerns from our building officials and enforcement staff, but nothing we couldn't solve by working together. Namely, we found that there is no special inspections or structural observations required outside of normal concrete expansion inspections. So the line of hence inspection costs will increase, time and manpower for client checkers and inspectors. They actually didn't by much. I wouldn't expect this to increase from Malibu's city staff time significantly. Also enforcement of the program has been minimal as we're experiencing even during COVID. Because it simply requires the submission of just one compliance form for plan check. The staff can review this compliance sheet from City Hall at the same time they plan check the rest of the building plans. Ultimately, minimal extra time is required. Lastly, we have no reports of any construction delays on any of our projects that have trigger compliance and it's mainly because our low-concrete ordinance was formed in coordination with our development community and anyone along the concrete value chain. And we developed a collaborative approach to streamline compliance, so ultimately, everything was mostly a positive experience. So want to encourage everyone to consider studying deeper into how this will work out in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Race.
Our next speaker is Doug Stewart, followed by Juan Gonzalez, Rosemary Ide, and Gerard Ide.
Doug, are you available?
I am here. Good evening, council members. I'm Doug Stewart, speaking to you as a 22-year resident in Malibu. Lance Simmons penned a letter to the Malibu Times editor that appeared in last Thursday's edition and it has garnered a significant level of positive responses throughout the community. Lance is on an airplane right now and requested I read a shortened version of his letter into the record. Dear editor, politics is not for the faint-hearted. Policymaking, on the other hand, requires skills at achieving compromise so as to advance the better interests of our community at large. I've seen both, both the best in policymaking, such as when elected officials have put their careers on the line in the name of personal integrity and the worst in policymaking when elected officials have succumbed to moneyed interests and popular will to vote against their better judgment. The personal nature of the attacks leveled at council members Grisanti, Pearson, and Fair recently is embarrassing to those who value public service and common decency. You may not agree with an individual's rationale for decision-making, but the level unwarranted attacks against the person's character and integrity reflects a lack of skill. Impugning motives of those who spend long hours with little pay dedicated to making it better for the citizens, even those who may not have supported their campaigns, is truly a thankless job. You have every right to disagree, but launching personal attacks is cowardly and exhibits a lack of restraint more befitting a spoiled child than a responsible adult. The abandonment of civility, community, and respect is a very cancer that's befalling our political system and has aroused a passion that is not healthy for the veteran of the community as a whole. This has led to cult-like adherence to self-destruction among the growing number of elected officials at all levels of government. There's simply no room for misguided populism based upon emotion more than effective governance. Governing carries far more responsibility than campaigning. Following the popular will is not leadership and leadership does not equate to statesmanship. What is required of our elected officials is statesmanship which entails vision, wisdom, and often forces one to make difficult decisions. This past week, however, while trying to put a positive spin on what has become a painfully contentious city council meeting, Councilmember Silverstein proceeded to offer an explanation of democracy that is both wrong-headed and simply wrong by offering the way democracy works is not consensus, but rather by tearing down, tearing the system down by offering you must tear the place down in order to make progress. He either missed the classes on our political system or failed to comprehend the history of this grand experiment. No wonder city council meetings have become the zoo if they are. You represent the citizens of Malibu, all of them, even those who did not vote for you. This is a heavy load and if you're not up to the job, then gracefully bow out. System is breaking down, but not broken. Work to make it better, not rebuild it from the ground up. Chaos is a prescription befitting authoritarians. Lance Simmons, Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Our next speaker is Juan Gonzalez, followed by Rosemary Ide, Gerard Ide, and Joe Drummond.
Mr. Gonzalez, are you available?
Yes, I am. And good evening, Malibu City Council and Mayor. Appreciate your time here. I'm manager of sustainability for Central Concrete Supply and Ready-Mix. A ready-mix producer in Northern California, specifically operating in the San Francisco Bay area market. I'm not familiar with the proposed Malibu concrete code, but I was invited to speak by Scott Morris and give a perspective from the concrete producer on the Marin County low-carbon concrete code. And my understanding is going to be very similar to that, so I do have some knowledge, I guess some understanding of that since I was a part of it with another colleague of mine down and up in Marin County. The development of the code was unique and one of the first of its kind. I do have to say that Marin County did a diligent job in verifying the proposed limits for the concrete. They took into consideration the type of concrete being placed, the required construction schedule and the early age requirements for the constructability and the contractors, for the contractor's perspective. And they also ensured to do some outreach with the local concrete producers, understanding the sourcing of the raw materials and also the local concrete producers and the availability of the EPDs that were or weren't available at the time. The group's main goal was to create something that worked for everyone and setting limits that were achievable. And for that reason, we started with some benchmarks that were relatively high at the point with the National Ready-Mix Association, national benchmark, and then we batched it down, taking into consideration the type of placement, the place and finish methods that were required for the concrete performance for each of the PSI strength requirements. The group also really wanted to make sure it was a performance code and not so much a perspective code and reason why there's multiple limits or multiple pathways to meeting the code for achieving low-carbon concrete. As a concrete producer, we were in support of the Marin County code and encouraged that the Malibu proposed code here works with the local concrete producers to make sure there, there's going to be some limits that could be achieved with, with, throughout the stakeholder engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Our next speaker is Rosemary Ide, followed by Gerard Ide, Joe Drummond, and Garrett Mills.
Hi, Rosemary, are you available?
Yes, I am. Good evening to all. This video, which is Joe Drummond is showing, shows the abuse of the fire rebuilds that are happening now over 10% that weren't even addressed at the city council meetings amending the codes. And I donate my time to Joe and Gerhard Idi will do the same and he sits next to me.
You don't donate time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Members, the next item we have for you for B is the fire rebuild amendment. Scenarios where somebody would be proposing a water tank would fit under one of our existing coastal development permit exemptions, specifically 13.4.1, which is improvements to existing, existing single-family residences. So that would, like if you were going to add a water tank to most properties today, you would come in to the counter and probably be submitting an APR, an administrative plan review that, you know, doesn't have to go to the planning commission or anything like that. And it would be exempt under that 13.4.1 exemption that allows anything normally associated with single-family residences such as garages, swimming pools, fences, storage sheds, and landscaping. So unless, and then there are a couple of exceptions to that exemption, like if you happen to be in an ESHA or, you know, on a coastal bluff or something like that, so you could get knocked out for a couple of those reasons. But I think given where this fire occurred and that sort of thing, probably most water tanks would be able to be processed with an APR.
I don't think that they should be exempt from FAR. And the reason why I say that is it's not always wise for us to incentivize homes being larger and that oftentimes has always been looked as a giveaway. And I think that it's important for people to be mindful of that when they look at the size of the homes. And I think that if you were to go and add a basement on a home that's, you know, I don't know, do we have an average size of the homes that are destroyed in the fire? Yeah?
I'll bet it's 2,000, right? 2,800 to 3,000.
I really don't see a big issue if you want to go and add a basement to a 3,000 square foot house or 3,500 square foot house. In fact, I see no issue with that. But if you go and start taking every 4,000 square foot house and making it a 5,000 square foot house or 6,000 square foot house and making it a 7,000 square foot house, time and time again, what we see are the things that have made the community change sometimes in ways that many people don't always like and that's okay. There's many people that do like them as well and it's your property and you're entitled to work within the rules however you'd like. But I think it's always wise for the council to incentivize a smaller footprint that's sometimes a lot better for the environment.
We have looked at processing concurrently or possibly sequentially the fire rebuild and then...
And Rosemary, that was your three minutes. Gerard, can you confirm that you'd like this video to play in your time as well?
Yeah, to Joe Drummond, please, yeah.
Yeah, to Joe Drummond, please, yeah.
Oh, did I unmute?
We'll play the rest of the video.
Okay, thank you.
A separate application for a basement, as long as it could meet the the other CDP exemption, then that could possibly be done administratively also. So that's the kind of mechanism we're looking at.
I think if we move forward on this, we're really relying on the staff to administer what is in the code. And if we find out in the first ten or twenty homes that people are taking advantage of this situation or we, it's in a giveaway, as some people say, hey, those big basements are giveaways. It's incentivizing them to make larger structures underground. Then we're going to have to come back here to council and address it.
I don't want to joust on it, but then we shouldn't have a thousand square feet as a basement with no impact on TDSF. So, but we do in the code, so that's if we don't want that, then we need to change the code at some point. I realize they're two separate issues, but if you're rebuilding a home, they probably don't seem that way.
I've sat on Zeracis where we've had those hearings and we've tried to address basements over the years, and there's been so many different renditions of it. I very much understand that. I'm just saying, if you do that for that many homes, which you're opening the floodgates for that, and I I want these people to be able to get back in their homes as quickly as possible. To get back in your home as quickly as possible, you probably don't want to build a basement anyways. But most people are going to take advantage of that. And so there's a timeline on it. We can go through the process. It's appealable. I get it. I just want us to be conscious of what's going on.
I really believe if coastal feels that we're gaming this and we're ruining the nature of neighborhoods, somebody's going to push that out there very quickly.
I don't think that, I'm not saying, I want to be very clear, I'm not saying that we're gaming it. I just want to be very clear with what happens when we do this. And, you know, everyone should be entitled to absolutely go back in their home and get back there as quick as possible. And you do get a thousand square foot exemption, as Mikey said, if you build a basement. So I understand that. It's just what you foresee happening is the potential where a lot of the homes, people take advantage of the basement, even probably people that have already gotten approved to build like-for-like. One of those twenty or a handful of those twenty people that got approved are probably going to come back in and say, well, what do you mean? I can add a basement now and and do it over the counter? So you're adding a lot more TDSF, which will add to the taxable role for the county of Los Angeles. God bless America.
Okay, and our next speaker after Gerard is Joe Drummond, followed by Garrett Mills, Joan Ross, and Bert Ross.
Joe, are you available?
Yes. City Council, I spoke and sent emails to the Planning Commission and Richard Malika about how the staff has just made up our fire rebuild rules that are not to the codes because they think it is per the council's intent. However, the council was quite clear during their meetings heading up to the Coast Commission approving ordinance number four, four, five, as you saw in the video before, that they didn't want anyone taking advantage of the fire situation to make much bigger houses. So this clearly was not their intent. This was never even approached at a city council meeting because of the backlash that would have followed. How can fire rebuilds over ten percent not going through the code required CDP from section thirteen point four be continued when it does not follow these codes that were put in place for the Woolsey Fire or certified by the Coastal Commission? None of section thirteen point four states that there should be any exemptions for any builds over ten percent. Section thirteen point four point one, as stated by Bonnie Blue in the previous video, is for improvements such as garages, swimming pools, storage sheds, fences, and landscaping, not for builds over ten percent. An unbuilt or an incomplete structure is not an existing structure eligible for improvements pursuant to section thirteen point four point one, such as additions. If the Coastal Commission wouldn't allow a basement with a waiver or exemption, they certainly would not allow an addition over ten percent, and especially not over forty percent with a simple administrative plan review or plan verification. If basements as a separate exemption is applied, this is to code apparently, but not building over ten percent with the same exemption. This is the unexpected gift to developers. I don't understand how the planning department can make up their own rules on the slide during the Woolsey Fire workshop that goes against these codes and create fire rebuild option number four. I have just informed the Coast Commission what's been happening with these giveaways for fire rebuilds in Malibu. I also understand that one of our council members have benefited from this giveaway. Can applications please be processed correctly? This is just not right, especially if the rights go with the land and new owners can swoop in and overdevelop these properties. This takes away from our neighborhoods that no longer offer more affordable family options with this mansionization. I have suggested that the fire rebuild should be processed by order of submission or order of group of submissions. If one group comes in after, they must wait until the one before is approved before progressing regardless of requirements, et cetera. The council member's new purchase was definitely fast-tracked and avoided a required CDP somehow. The fair order of submission way of processing should be enacted immediately for the sake of those waiting so long. Please let the residents know why the Coast Commission was not asked to certify these waivers or exemptions for builds over ten percent and how Malibu can complete this without following the codes laid out from the both the Planning Commission and City Council meetings on this. I question especially a certain council member's application after they knowingly participated in meetings where the subject of giveaways for larger TDSF homes was addressed with caution. This kind of favoritism is obviously not fair in following the codes. The same kind of thing happened in our landslide area of Big Rock after the ninety-three fires and also lifted a moratorium on building and allowed much bigger homes, thus putting our dewatering system and landslide area at risk with this higher needed capacity that we just don't have the ability to manage. Now we are forced to look at a new assessment district largely because of this. Please advise on the next steps with this. Thank you.
Our next speaker would be Garrett Mills, but I don't see him in the meeting, so we'll hear from Joan Ross, followed by Bert Ross and Jim Braden, and circle back to Garrett at the end.
Thank you. Joan, are you available?
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Councilmember Silverstein, my name is Joan Ross, and I'm here tonight to speak about your outrageous recent attack on my husband, Bert Ross. Bert and I have been married for almost forty years. My husband is one of the most courageous, honorable, philanthropic, caring people I know. And contrary to your gratuitous condemnation, Bert also has a fantastic sense of humor. It's bad enough that you falsely implied that Bert is somehow pro-development, which he most certainly is not. But you have also taken your venom to another level by falsely accusing Bert of having corrupt motives, which is blatantly absurd and beyond the pale. Since we moved to Malibu over ten years ago, all Bert has done is try to help our community. He was one of the co-founders of the original Malibu Task Force on Homelessness and raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to help our most disadvantaged people move off of the streets of Malibu and into permanent housing. For no compensation, Bert has written a local humor column for almost eight years, bringing many residents a smile and bringing us together during difficult times. You cannot imagine how many people have come up to Bert and thanked him for his column, including one who spoke of how healing his columns were for the community after the Woolsey Fire. Bert has provided us with a welcome chance to laugh, often at his own expense, including during the challenging aftermath of the fire and later the pandemic. Mr. Silverstein, rather than bringing the residents of Malibu together in a positive way, your approach has been to engage in and incite vicious attacks on fellow council members, city hall staff, and residents who happen to disagree with your scorched-earth tactics. Your destructive, hostile, unprofessional behavior seems limitless and is taking a toll on our community. You have made it a disturbing habit to falsely accuse people of wrongdoing without any evidence whatsoever, casually and facelessly smearing good people who have worked tirelessly to help this town. Recently, you falsely implied publicly that my husband is supporting development and then accused him of doing so for, quote, "personal financial reasons," unquote. Well, there is nobody in this world who knows Bert better than I, and I am telling you unequivocally that he has no financial reasons for defending the three members of the council whom you constantly and personally attack. And Bert is certainly not in favor of development, no matter what you say. Mr. Silverstein, if you have any evidence of Bert's so-called personal financial reasons for the public positions that he takes, then let's hear what they are tonight. Otherwise, take back your defamatory comments and apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Our next speaker is Bert Ross, followed by Jim Braden, Brad Smith, and Jeff Peterson.
Hi, Bert, are you available?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Mr. Silverstein, you defame all those who have the temerity to disagree with you, whether it is the former city manager Arnold and Cameron York, Hounds Lake, or the very people you serve with. Nobody has spared your vindictiveness. You recently attacked three members of the city council, even going back forty years to besmirch the character of our current mayor. You call Karen Fair a pro-development simply because she owns two homes in Malibu. And as for Mikey Pearson, the best you could cough up is that you don't know him well enough to know whether he is a racist or an anti-Semi. The fact is that Paul, Karen, and Mikey have served our community in many capacities long before you ever moved here. And because I do not sit by silently when you smear good people, you have, of course, now tried to defame me. You have every right to defend yourself and to attack me. I am not afraid of you. I can take a punch. But you do not have the right to spread falsehoods to make up your own facts. You state, quote, "The new owners of the Malibu Times admirably refused to permit Mr. Ross to abuse the privilege of his humorless column to pursue a self-serving political agenda," close quote. Do you have the slightest idea what you were talking about? The new owners of the Malibu Times are simply trying to put out a newspaper. Do not politicize them. They have not stopped me from writing my humor column nor from writing an occasional letter to the editor, just like you or any other citizen can do. I did not give up my rights as a citizen because I write a humor column. I have not, as you falsely claim, misused my column to attack you or to promote a self-serving political agenda because I have no such agenda, and you, Mr. Silverstein, know that. If you stand behind what you say, tell the public tonight what my political agenda is and how it is self-serving. And which of my over four hundred humor columns promotes this self-serving agenda, which exists only in your own mind? You have even gone so far as to accuse me of no longer having as much integrity as I used to. But integrity does not come and go over time. I never thought I would lift to hear the likes of you question my honesty. You falsely claim, quote, "For personal financial reasons, Mr. Ross is aligned with a pro-development faction." How dare you? You are an attorney. Where is your evidence? I have no such personal financial reason, and I demand you tell the public now, tonight, what these personal financial reasons are. You are spreading ball-faced lies, so let's hear you back up your charges with facts. And if you took the time to do your homework, you would have found that I have done far more in my life to stop development than you ever will. You tell us at every opportunity ad nauseam how you got more votes than anybody else. But most people didn't vote for you to smear others, and I know many people who already regret having voted for you. Don't be so vain as to only believe those who make the most noise. If you do not cease your endless personal attacks, the people of Malibu will speak loudly and clearly in two years when you run for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Our next speaker is Jim Braden, followed by Brad Smith, Jeff Peterson, and Cindy McLaughlin.
Hi, Jim, are you available?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I come to you on a little different tone, and I'm here as Jim Braden. I've been enjoying Malibu for the last forty-eight years. I enjoy camping, hiking, swimming, all the restaurants, yogurt, the park to walk through. I enjoy all these things. So with that, I'm going to tell you there's a sheriff's race coming up. And just like you guys talking about all the Woolsey Fire stuff and everything else, see, I have my children go to Malibu. My daughters worked at several stores down there. I have real estate holdings in Los Angeles County. And the sheriff's race is very important. And all I want to do is make you aware, you should go and research the candidates and see who would be best for the job. The, I was shocked last year when they had the Capitol incident. I think that's very misguided, and these people could have used their votes to accomplish what they wanted, not storming the Capitol. So with that, I want to tell you, a candidate, Eli Barra, he stands out to me. He speaks very well. This guy's very accomplished, but his beginnings, his mother came from Cuba with his sister, and then he came along. He lived in section eight housing for twenty-one years. He, after that, went in the United States Marine Corps and served our country. After that, he came back to and came on the sheriff's party. He served the communities of South LA, and he does it with compassion. With that, he promoted, he worked at the special weapons teams for this county, and he went through all that, promoted again to lieutenant. He worked in the south area at stations. He then promoted to captain. That, to me, stands out. The captain, he was the captain of South LA Station. He demanded that the sergeants come in there and the deputies, they gave a commitment to the community of five years. He wanted to create a relationship with the community and lead the community with compassion and policing. That's a very important quality. There's things you should look at at these candidates. Do they have leadership quality? Has it been displayed? And above that, when he promoted further to commander and also later to chief, he's held positions that were over Emergency Operations Bureau, over special weapons teams, all the things, and cops teams, all the things that impact your community when disasters happen, and also bringing extra resources for things you experienced, and I experienced now. We have vehicle burglaries. We have more assaults, more violent crime.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brad Smith, followed by Jeff Peterson, Cindy McLaughlin, and Ryan Hekensky.
Hi, this is Brad Smith. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Brad.
Great, thank you. I'm a Malibu local. And I want to say that with everything that's happening in the world today, it's reassuring to know that one of the most vexing questions before a city council is, does Bert Ross have a sense of humor? We are lucky to have Malibu's own art buckwalled. Self-deprecating humor is an art form. Let's direct our energy to things that matter, like a detention center being forced on our community without any input from our citizens. The old adage, "Take your work seriously, not yourself," is always good to follow. In summary, I'm with Bert on this one. Thank you. Good night.
Appreciate your brevity.
Our next speaker is Jeff Peterson, followed by Cindy McLaughlin, Ryan Hekensky, I'm sorry, Hekensky, and Alicia Peak.
Are you available, Jeff?
Yes, my name's Jeff Peterson. I'm with Calpoint Builders, general contractor of twenty-nine years. And I'd like to speak about low-carbon concrete. I have the privilege of working on zero one, which is complete, and zero two, which is under construction. And we are implementing a low-carbon or no-carbon concrete mix that we'd like to demonstrate the performance, et cetera, is equivalent to a regular concrete mix. Of our, we have deputy inspectors on site taking core samples, slump tests, et cetera. And the performances meet and or exceed regular concrete mixes. If we can offset the amount of cement by twenty-five percent, that's a huge, huge carbon impact. And I think it is the future. If the performance is there, the workability is there, and it has the same finish appearance as regular concrete, I don't see why there shouldn't be a standard going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Our next speaker is Cindy McLaughlin, followed by Ryan Hekensky, Alicia Peak, and Howard Rudsky.
Are you available, Cindy?
I am here. Thank you so much. Good evening, Malibu City Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Cindy McLaughlin. I'm the head of product for Carbon Built. We're a company that spun out of the Institute for Carbon Management at UCLA. We make a technology that helps precast concrete producers, as opposed to ready-mix, make very low-carbon or even carbon-negative concrete products. Precast products make up about forty percent of the concrete market. Given the enormous technological progress happening in your backyard, Malibu has what feels like an incredibly exciting opportunity to write a low-carbon concrete building code that goes bigger and bolder than anybody else out there, potentially making national headlines. If Malibu signals to the Southern Cali- If Malibu signals to the Southern California market through specifications in the code that you'll require very low-carbon concrete, this highly conservative concrete industry will move far more quickly to invest in retrofitting their plants or their process to make low-carbon product because they'll have no other choice. The technology exists. We know what we need to do. There's no scientific uncertainty about the problem or the solution. It's now time to get it implemented as quickly as humanly possible to meet the demands of the moment. So as head of product, part of my job is to keep tabs on the evolution of low-carbon concrete and other building materials policy around the country. There are a host of bills in various stages of passage, I think I last counted thirty-eight at the federal, state, and local levels, that deal with low-carbon concrete. Portland, Oregon, and then Marin County were both leaders in this area in 2019. Malibu today could go so much further because our ability to manufacture low-carbon concrete has evolved significantly in the last few years. We agree with Mr. Gonzalez, who spoke earlier, in that performance-based code rather than prescriptive code is the best way to ensure the innovations that are continuing to come out of places like UCLA can be accommodated. So I just wanted to offer our help. If you need help thinking through or drafting the legislation, I'd be happy to offer the pro bono assistance of my policy team. We can also rope in volunteers we work with in the low-carbon materials policy world who are equally passionate about this subject and well-versed in the specifics. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you, Cindy McLaughlin.
Our next speaker is Ryan Hekensky, followed by Alicia Peak, Howard Rudsky, and Eric Previn.
Hi, Ryan, are you there?
I am. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor, for your time. I am Ryan Hekensky. I am the Vice President of Business Development for a concrete company, Concrete AI, where we specialize in looking at concrete data and mixed-design data to help producers make low-carbon concrete. And as a licensed engineer in the state of California with extensive experience in concrete design, I wanted to throw my support for the low-carbon concrete code that you're considering and the motion that Scott Morris had asked for previously. I wanted to talk, take the time to talk a little bit about some technical aspects of concrete that may help the council make its decision on how to move forward. And I wanted to address two areas in particular. One is the strength of concrete, which is what the concrete building code often references most often. And that's what you need in order to have a structural integrity in a building. And I wanted to specifically talk about how low-carbon concrete does not delay strengthening at all. You are able to design concrete the way that the Marin County Code has been built. You're able to design concrete for a specified strength at a certain age, and using the limits that, as a guideline like Marin has had, if you take in local feedback from producers, I think are very reasonable limits to be able to get the curing time that you need for those strengths listed. The other area that I wanted to talk about is the durability of concrete, how well it holds up to aggressive environments like a coastal city like Malibu. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the International Building Code that is written by the American Concrete Institute, which is kind of the gold standard for the structural code. And they have limits listed in there for the amount of cement replacement that you can have, but only for one corrosive environment, which is an area of freestyle. And the last time I've checked, I think Malibu has pretty nice weather that you don't have to worry about it freezing there very often. The other area that there are some concerns is like areas where sulfates may be in the soils. The building code actually requires materials that would be used to replace cement like fly ash or slag in order to be able to combat the sulfate exposure. And the last one is corrosion. And there are ways to mitigate corrosion, and the building code actually has no limits on the amount of cement replacement or any cement limits that you have, minimums that you have to have. So I just want to reiterate that from a structural standpoint, as a licensed engineer in the state of California, that the durability and the strength can easily be achieved with the code that, some of the code guidelines that are being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Alicia Peak, followed by Howard Rudsky, Eric Previn, and Ryan.
Hello, Alicia. Are you available?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Grisanti and council members. First of all, I want to thank the council for making the school separation a priority. The inequity our youth experiences in our community, given our high property taxes, is truly devastating. So thank you so much. Secondly, I want to beg this council and our community to have some common decency towards one another. As a mother, high school teacher, and Parks and Rec Commissioner, I am outraged by the rhetoric that has transpired on these meetings. Words matter. You all are setting an example for this city and our youth. Please be kind, and let's work on getting stuff done for our city and stop wasting time attacking one another. Despite what national politics have devolved into, we are a community, friends, and neighbors. Mr. Silverstein, I beg of you to bring common decency and civility back to these council meetings. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Howard Rudsky, followed by Eric Previn, Ryan, and Colin Drummond.
Mr. Rudsky, are you available?
Howard, there you go.
Yeah, I just unmuted. Sorry, I didn't know you had to do it. Good evening. Well, I was away for six weeks and came back and the fun never ended. I just went away. So I'd like to talk to the citizens of the city, because the city council already understands what I'm about to say. The things that matter, I think, are the fire rebuilds, public safety, safety on the highway, and our way of life. And if we don't have city staff to do these things and help us get what we want, then we're never going to get what we want, because look around. Every department of the city is lacking staff. We don't have a permanent city manager. We don't have a permanent assistant city manager. We don't have a permanent city attorney. And the thing with Malibu is that we usually get young people in their late twenties, early thirties, because they'll work hard, they'll drive far, because they know in five to six years or so, if they do this, they'll get a really great job somewhere else. But they also now know how social media works, and they understand that this audio and video will stay with them for the rest of their lives. And so now they're not even willing to come because it's detrimental. And the career politicians at Malibu has to have, work with them, Coastal Commission, Caltrans, Regional Water, et cetera. All these are career politicians in Sacramento. They can wait out a four-year term. They can wait out an eight-year term. They're still going to be there. And they can stall the process and give Malibu nothing. So unless we start being more civil, get stuff done, act like grown-ups, and instead of what's going on now, and stop attacking one another, and the citizens attacking other citizens, attacking city council, you know, all this goes on video and audio. And if we want anybody to come here that can actually do the heavy lifting that the city council will approve, we better think about this. And everybody better start calling in and saying stuff, because everyone knows, like I've said many times before, what I'm going to say and the nineteen other people are going to say, you can predict it. But you guys are the city. We're all the city. And if we don't get our act together and stop this vitriol and figure out what we can accomplish in the time remaining of the council people's terms, nothing's going to get done. And this is embarrassing. I was on a plane coming back, somebody's private jet from Europe, trying to persuade them to help the city, and they're, like the city council said, they're billionaires. They want the help. All right, thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Previn, followed by Ryan and Colin Drummond.
Mr. Previn, are you available?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Eric Previn. I'm a longtime Malibu guy. My mom has a place out on Malibu Road, near the end of Malibu Road. And recently, we've had a situation. Well, first I'll talk about something just that as we head into summer. I want to be clear about the, I saw the parking citations was also on the agenda. I'll come back later, but just to mention that we have to give people who come to the public beach at least a chance. So, you know, I know we do cite, and we made one point three million dollars last year, which is kind of impressive, I guess, or maybe a little bit unimpressive. I'm not quite sure. It's a lot of money, but we have to give people a fair chance. By that, I mean the lines on the road are kind of like, there's no way to park, and, you know, I don't know. I also feel like we have extremely long hydrant blockages, like three, it looks almost like three car, it used to be smaller. But what I wanted to really give a general public comment about is how we feel a little bit under siege at the moment. The Rubenstein's sold us, sold the place to my mom years ago, and then they sold their side that they kept to a woman named Esther Lena Ash, who is a from Florida, and I would describe her as a high-conflict divorce litigant. She has her own appellate case about outrageous harassment behavior. It's a very sad story. And we had a very hard time with her, just trying to live in, you know, we share common area with her. And she was just always away and had no, and had millions and millions of dollars, but couldn't manage to pay her portion of the water bill. We had shutdowns. It was very frustrating. When she passed away, it was very sad, and some trustees contacted us, and we did the best we could, and we tried to get them to engage and do some stuff. But then, very recently, her son, who we knew briefly, showed up with his fiancee and have done almost everything you could think of to start a fight in litigation. They called the cleaning lady a racist. They called the, they might tried to throw her grandson off the common area. He was fixing something. Very, very questionable behavior, and they call the sheriffs. I think Joe Joe Fender's on the call, you know, they, they've come out several times. My poor mother is in her eighties and now is facing criminal charges. You know, they're citizens, and we assume this is going to go away, but we kind of need help, and there's a code issue too, because they're, what the, one of the subject matters that's of interest now is that they put up a gate right in the middle of a common area that's always been common. We have the CCNRs. All the lawyers from the old days when we got the place did up the plan, and it's, that's how it works. You got your unit, we got our unit, and everything in between is common area. So when you do something like that, obviously, I'm not going to get involved in cutting down their gate, but we don't, the CCNRs call for a kind of a mediation.
Thank you, Eric.
Our next speaker is Ryan, followed by Colin Drummond.
Hi, Ryan, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. Heard a lot this evening. I guess we have a lot of out-of-town cheerleaders attesting to people's prior integrity, and I think that's great. But I'm really hoping that we can circle back to the issues of the city, which is what most of these speakers have said. It gets really down to the substance of the matter, is what we need to be talking about. So my first point is, the city is in need of temporary planning staff. And there are resources and professional groups that do this on short-term basis, and I would suggest that you explore and contract for those services as has been done by this city before. We used to have Willdan Group processing permits. They can still do that, you know. You just have to pay them. You don't have to pay their retirement. You don't have to pay their unemployment and all that. You just have to pay the going rate. And we need to do catch-up for the rebuilds, because we've been distracted on some of these, you know, somewhat crazy commercial projects, which is another one of my points. Second point is, you need to adopt the correct interpretation for your staff, because they're picking and choosing on how to determine these total development square footage, whether a house is really a house, if it doesn't have an occupancy permit yet, and, you know, a bunch of other stuff that's allowing quite a furtherance of the gift of permit fee waivers and much, much different type of rebuilding than was ever anticipated when the city first approved of the fire rebuilds and the waiver of permit fees for them. Number three, going back to this, I recall Bert going after Bruce Silverstein. I thought that was a little bit out of character and ugly. There's a little too much black and white going on tonight on some of these issues. But the innuendo that came and attacked the council, and then the council attacked Bruce Silverstein too, and then kept the evidence in the report from the public for a long time, and just kind of milked it. I want to go back and talk about the joint-use parking agreement as my number four. And that is the proposed hotels and existing hotels that want to park their vehicles on the inland side of Pacifico Highway, because the land's cheaper, or to continue to operate out of compliance. It's not a good way. They're exporting their problems, and I think you're going to get another one of those appeals soon. And lastly, in support of a sheriff, if we're getting into political season, we need a sheriff that will support Malibu's local control and the right to regulate oversized vehicles and no camping or sleeping in public.
Thank you, Ryan.
Our next speaker is Colin Drummond, and then we'll circle back to the people we missed earlier.
Mr. Drummond, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. First, Joe, and I just want to say how terribly sorry we are to hear about Mikey Pearson's mom passing. Mikey, our condolences. Just a short message tonight, you know, just really tired of hearing about people attacking each other on the council, and we have so much work to do. And you have, you're among the few people who have the power to really, really affect change, so please, let's just focus on those things, fire resilience, overbuilding, sea rise, mini bikes. We've got, there's just so many things to focus on. If we could please do that and ask Mr. Silverstein not to address tonight's attacks, let's just get down to business, everybody, and we really appreciate your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Colin.
And now we can circle back to Will Wright, who we missed earlier.
Is Mr. Wright available?
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Will Wright. I work for the Los Angeles chapter of the American Institute of Architects, and I'm very thankful for the leadership of this city council. We're here to help provide you with a resource as you work to develop a low-carbon concrete ordinance. We recommend that you utilize the professional input of as many architects and engineers as possible, and we are a professional organization that can help create that bridge. I also want to make sure that, and we can do that from the pro bono policy assistance. That's what I'm here for. We have forty-five hundred members in LA, eleven thousand here in California, and we want to really make sure that Malibu has access to this insight so that you can have the healthiest and most sustainable city possible. I'd also just like to look for other opportunities for embodied carbon policies that City of Malibu can advance. And we are working diligently with as many communities as possible right now to make sure that we are doing these changes in such a way that we help with the transition to a green economy for all the jobs out there. So looking forward to the city council's leadership on this, and please reach out to the American Institute of Architects if you need any assistance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright.
And Mayor, I still don't see Garrett Mills in the meeting, and we don't have any other raised hands from the public, so that concludes public comments.
Okay, that takes us to item two B for commission committee and city manager updates. Do we have a commission report?
Checking right now, and no, you don't have any commission reports tonight.
Okay, any committee reports?
No committee reports either.
Okay. Mr. McClary, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First, I wanted to report that we had to reschedule the Zorasis meeting that was going to be held at the end of March. That has been rescheduled to this Thursday, April fourteenth at three thirty PM. Again, we'll be having discussions on the pesticide regulations and also having input on the TUP, the city's temporary use permit. So those are the two main items on the agenda. Wanted to note that we have had two meetings now as part of the mediation with the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. Uh we are scheduled now for a third meeting with them. Uh so I cannot really get into any of the discussions, obviously, since we're in the middle of the mediation, but it is progressing and we do have another date scheduled. Also wanted to report to the council that um starting this month. Uh we will be as part of the orientation for all uh new employees of the city. They will be receiving a copy of the city's mission and vision statement. Uh as part again, as part of their orientation as they are welcomed uh onboard at the city. Also wanted to report, uh and I will be forwarding a memo to the city council on this tomorrow. Uh I will be forwarding a memo from our planning director regarding the city's a short term rental STR, uh local coastal program amendment. Uh the California Coastal Commission staff has indicated that they were moving towards denial of the proposed amendment. Of course, this was a a going to be an amendment that was going to require that short term rentals be hosted within the city of Malibu. Uh the coastal commission staff has indicated that they're concerned that the hosted requirement uh will reduce the available. Rental of STRs in the city. So as a result, uh coastal staff has expressed a willingness to consider some modifications. Uh towards the amendment. Uh there is a deadline of November by which they have to act on the application, which means. Uh any action by uh the coastal commission would need to occur by um by their October meeting. Uh so we will be engaging with the coastal staff on possible modifications. Of course, we do not have any direction from city council on that, so we will be bringing a matter, we will be bringing this to city council, this matter to city council. For discussion and direction to see if that is an avenue that the city council would like to pursue. Uh also wanted to note that um the numbers so far uh seem pretty good. In terms of COVID right now, uh the county did report a slight increase in numbers. Uh and they are concerned with uh with the new BA two variant that is circulating. Uh right now, the numbers are still looking good and the indicators are still. Um you know, low in terms of of threat to the community, but it's something that the uh county health staff is keeping a close eye on at this point. Uh also wanted to note um. That we are uh in the home stretch of making a selection for the permanent assistant city manager. Uh we have uh made an offer to a candidate and we are hoping that they will accept that and we'll be making a formal announcement soon. Also wanted to note that we continue to uh make um. Take a rather strong action in regard to the the car shows and the illegal gatherings that have been uh occurring. In the Cross Creek area in downtown, uh and I know that the sheriff's department is continuing to give. Um a high level of attention to that as well as addressing concerns with street racing and general safety on Pacific Coast Highway. And I do know that our captain and our lieutenant are here this evening, uh if you would like to hear a report from them on that. Other than that, that concludes uh my report. Uh I do want to actually remind the public again that we will be resuming our in person city council meetings, beginning with the May ninth regular meeting. Uh and after that date, other city commissions will also be returning to in person meetings. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. McClary. Uh I believe you mentioned that the captain Captain Fender was available. And as well as Chad.
Yes. Yes, I believe they are available.
Yes. Captain Fender, would you like to lead off?
I am, sir. I'm just waiting for my video to start.
Okay. There you go.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I apologize. I'm coming to you uh from my phone in my office, but I'm doing a dual Zoom meeting here. I have uh one of our other cities on my computer, so I had to use the phone for this one. Uh I'll keep my comments brief. Uh I'm going to let Lieutenant Waters, my, you know, my resident Malibu expert there, comment on some of the uh. Some of the happenings and how our our posture is affecting the the car show and the uh speeding and racing on a PCH. But uh I just wanted to give a report that the sheriff's department is doing well. Your uh your deputies over here at the station were fully manned, withstanding our normal absences or or vacancies, but we're doing well. The station participated in its annual Baker to Vegas relay race this weekend. We did well, uh placing about eleventh out of the fifty or eleventh out of twenty four. Uh teams within our division. So good showing from Malibu Law Still Sheriff Station shows you that your deputies are fit, in shape and ready to respond to calls for service. Um I did want to comment on, I went, I attended the uh the Chumash Native American Festival on Saturday. What what an incredible event. Uh the first one that I had ever been a part of, my wife is from uh Washington State and grew up next to a reservation. Uh Native American Reservation, so she'd been a lot more familiar with those types of gatherings than I have, but what an incredible showing uh. From the Native American communities that came out there in Malibu. The city was a great host. It looked like a great event. We had no problems. Um and then after that, I was fortunate to speak at a community meeting and up in the Big Rock community. Um with some some neighborhood uh attendees and some of the community members was great. Uh I really encourage. You know, the communities to come out and have more of these meetings. And if you'd like me or one of my lieutenants to speak, to comment on uh issues affecting Malibu. We're always available for you. Uh it was great to come out there and speak. It was, I think it was planned for about two hours. It lasted about three. Because we had a lot of good questions, but uh more than happy to come out and answer the public's questions. It's not that often that you come in contact, I believe, with. You know, members of the department outside of the patrol deputies who are, you know, very good at answering your questions, but if you you want to get a bigger perspective on what's going on with the department. Feel free to uh reach out, have the public reach out to us. And uh we'll definitely start coming out to some more of these community meetings and maybe get some of those uh block watch and uh neighborhood watch meetings. You know, revitalized from what they've probably been the last couple of years, but. Just like I said, Mr. Cristani, I just wanted to let everybody know that the sheriff's department is doing great. Uh we're ready to serve and uh no problems here at the office.
Thank you very much. Captain Fender. Lieutenant Waters, would you like to give us the detail?
Yes, sir. Really aggressive stance this weekend on the uh Malibu Car Show, which is over in the Cross Creek area. Uh we had several motor deputies out there enforcing uh traffic laws and safety. On the PCH area and Cross Creek area, and we ended up writing about forty two citations in about a five hour period. As well as towing several vehicles and also having some sent to the state referee. For noise for excessive uh or or modified exhaust. Uh we ended up towing one vehicle. Um and yeah, so we're we're taking an aggressive stance there. We're making sure that this is a. You know, if we're gonna if we're gonna congregate, we're gonna make sure that it's going to be a safe environment for them to do so and they're not gonna uh. Be on the streets, racing up and down the streets. I know that's a big problem, so. We did that and then we also been uh also enforcing some other uh issues throughout the city of Malibu and checking these uh vehicles. For though someone mentioned earlier, the oversized vehicles or the camping overnight. We're also hitting those very hard and we probably tow, I think we towed two RVs this week, so. We're taking a aggressive stance on the traffic issues and uh also the crime as well. So you'll be seeing a lot of more enforcement here in the next couple of weeks on the uh on the burglary side of things.
Can you can you comment at all about the uh what was discovered Saturday night or Sunday, Sunday morning? Near the near the creek?
Yeah, unfortunately, there was a uh Malibu, uh what was it? Sorry, it wasn't a resident. It was a transient. Who was living down in the creek area who uh it looks like he might have passed from an overdose. So um yeah, that's what was going on on Cross Creek, just right by the bridge there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. I think that brings us to uh city council's subcommittee reports. And Steve Uring's hand is raised.
Thank you, Paul. Uh. I'll start off, I'll start off with some good news. Um I hike through Sarah Canyon almost every day. And recently, I've been running into Southern California Edison in there and they've been doing two things. They they've got arborists who are running around, looking at all the trees that they're trimming. And make sure they, you know, they're 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 saving the ones they can save and making sure they're doing a good job trimming the other ones. And this week I ran into a biologist uh from Southern California Edison was going around noticing all the bird nests. I mean, so in terms of when they go back and and do any work on the trees, uh they're trying to protect the wildlife. It's out there, so. I've got a lot of issues with Southern California Edison, but when they're doing something good, I think we should acknowledge that. And I think they are trying to take care of that that trimming. Chumash Day, uh I attended Chumash Day, I think as Captain Fender, you know, Chief Fender, I not or noted, it was a heck of an event. Uh and I wanted to thank city staff. I mean, the city staff made, they did one heck of a job. The number of people that show up, I don't know what the count is. But it's got to be very high and these the staff did a great job anywhere from the entrance gate uh to helping people go across PCH. They did a superb job, uh and I thank them for that. I attended administrative and finance committee meeting this week, which we did this late early this afternoon. That'll be going to city council. Uh I did go past Cross Creek on Sunday morning when the uh sheriffs were out there and they were out there, of course. I mean, they were all over the place and I know that they uh towed a couple of cars. I did not see, I and I don't, I couldn't tell if the shopping center had done what it was supposed to do, put up signs. And I don't know if anybody knows that, but uh we want to make sure we keep pushing them so that that is going to give the sheriff more opportunity to. Control what's going on down there and if they're not going to do that, let's get after them. They said they would, so they let's push on that. Recruiting uh and it's. Front page of Malibu Times is a statement in there that I guess Paul made at the uh. Business Roundtable that we have put our search for a city manager on hiatus. I was not aware that we had done that. Uh matter of fact, last week I I wrote a note to John Conde asking where we were in terms of going back and getting the recruiting going again. So unless something, unless there was a vote taken that I was not aware of, I don't think we've got it on a hiatus and I think we should crank it back up. And see, you know, and make sure we're staying on on top of that that issue. Which I think is what the residents want us to do. Civic Center. I don't know how many residents have recently had a chance to drive down Cross Creek Lane in the Civic Center. But if you haven't had that opportunity, you better take it now because traffic down there is not going to get any better. Uh I got a bunch of calls this weekend from, and not but not this week. From people who are just beginning to notice the La Paz development down there, a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, a new shopping center. And they're trying to imagine what the impact on traffic is going to be when that gets completed. When you add in what we're getting from Whole Foods and what we're going to get from uh the the uh San Monica College when it's done. I mean, somewhere down the line. We went wrong. I mean, that we we have dramatically changed the nature of our city. With some of the development that's going on down there. So I encourage residents, go down, take a look at that, get familiar with it because there's probably more coming. And as we go forward, we're going to need your voices to help us make sure that we are doing the right thing for the city, for the residents. And not turning ourselves into the next Beverly Hills or Laguna, whatever the heck it is, because boy, that sure seems to be the direction we're headed in. And finally, the video that that Rosemary played, that was interesting. I I don't remember that. And I guess the question is maybe Richard or somebody should, how did we get from there? Where basically we were telling the the city council that, you know, with this code, they they were talking about, would let them put a a basement in. To a situation where we're now letting people basically add another forty percent to their house. I mean, how how did that? It was the city council made aware of that when you they made that change? How did you get from where we were with that presentation? To where we are today because that's a fairly large jump. Uh and I'm just interested in figuring out whether the staff can make those calls down the road or whether they have to go through the city council to get some approval for that. So Paul, with that, back to you.
Thank you, Steve. Who would like to be next? Okay, I'll jump in. Uh I too went to Schumash Day. Uh and I had the good fortune of uh being there and. It was really a very uplifting event, tons of people. They were all having a great time. And like everybody else, I saw zero problems and uh it was a wonderful thing. It's once a year. They haven't had it. This is the first time they've had it in three years. And uh they were glad to be back and we were glad to have them. After that, I went up to that uh neighborhood meeting in Big Rock. And had the pleasure of uh listening to. Acting Captain Fender for. Uh a good portion of the three hours. He did a great job and uh the questions never stopped, so that was wonderful. Loved that. Uh I got a call from uh some neighbors in Sarah Retreat. And you better be careful, Steve, because they're seeing lions out there early in the morning and at dusk. And uh walking right down the street and we are hoping to at a future meeting. Have uh someone from National Parks to tell us, give us some sort of sort of feedback about how people should behave. And what what best practices are. Because that's a situation that has not occurred in the past and and they would like to to ensure that everybody stays safe. And uh. I also uh. I want to applaud Karen for nominating that we also have the uh meeting adjourned. In favor of. In the memory of Inga. As well as uh Mikey's stepmom and uh. I'm looking. Life is so weird. It is so weird. Uh and I I've been told that there is a GoFundMe uh page for the family. Of Inga and uh. I'm sure we can find it for you online if you're interested in that. And a lot of my neighbors were well acquainted with the man and. And uh nobody had anything bad to say about him and someday we'll find out what actually happened. I hope. Uh that's about it for me. Uh Mikey, I see your hand. You're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I don't really have any activities to report because as you gather, they're mostly personal in nature, not city, but I am sorry to have missed them. Great events, including Chumash Days, which was fantastic last time it occurred and I went. Um so I'll comment on the speakers quickly. Um. Coastal Commission. I'm not surprised, but I am surprised, so I look forward to hearing more about where we're at on that. If uh something was sent out and I haven't read it yet, I apologize. Um. It does make me glad um. We or I brought forward the permit system we have now because it's definitely helped. But I did not know we were going to end up here at the coastal mission and uh we'll see how that goes. Thanks for sharing that. I um as far as the speakers that spoke. About civility, I agree. I. I hope we can do much better than we have. And I vow to play my part as well as possible at all times. I've known Bert a long time. I was away or not aware of the issues going on there, but um I hope we can move forward in a more positive light. As a council and as a community. Um the low carbon concrete, I've heard about this for a while. Um I've asked them a number of questions and um. I'm in full support. But then we get into the technical part of this. Um. I'm reminded that I have a list of environmental policies I want to bring forward that are just sitting there for the simple reason that we have no bandwidth. Related to the Woolsey Fire, pandemic, loss of staff, loss of. Of city leadership, so really more than anything, I'm going to say that's the issue and and. Mayor, I'm going to ask if maybe um. And I haven't checked with her. I didn't know this is even coming up tonight. If Yolanda might give us a few words on some of the. Issues we might face to. Bring this forward. I actually, my guess is Yolanda, it's easier to bring forward than it is to implement is what I'm guessing. But I I would, if you you seem willing and you have some. But I would, if you seem willing and you have a smile on your face, it'd be great if you could give us a few words on this.
Hi, good evening, Council, and thank you for the opportunity to review the petition and hear of all of the speakers that have come up front. I remind you, a lot of the speakers are come from Marin County, Northern California, which are, they are experts and I appreciate their expertise. I sent an email this morning regarding 12 items that I'm concerned, I'm not going to go over the 12 items. But one thing that I really want to remind you, and I'm here to serve the public and to serve council. So the first thing I want to start is saying, currently I'm following your priorities. Public safety, fire rebuild and a school separation. I'm involved in the number two the most. Because we did have a big fire in 2018. And I know that I'm going to tell you the numbers, but it's important that you keep the numbers in your mind. We only have given 73 families their homes that constitute 14% of the total lost. We are still in a major fire rebuild. 156 homes under construction, 120 under review, and then 140 that are about to come. So just keeping you on that. The other item that I, as you guys know, I oversee environmental sustainability, which is a big umbrella, it has your environmental programs, your environmental health and your building and safety. I not only do the daily operations of the city, but also the, although clean water compliance or ELYC's discharge compliance. Sewer plant phase two is coming up. 444 parcels are going to be connecting in the next six months, in the next year. And then we have an electrical vehicle streamlined state mandate that is becoming into effect at the beginning of the year. We have a coastal vulnerability report and outreach that we're working on. We're having a permitting software. We are also have a dark sky implementation that needs to happen. I have an implementation of the most ambitious state mandate, the 1383 implementation for organics. I have a new building code updates of volume of 12, a 12-volume building code that is happening on the next six months. And on top of that, I do not have a deputy building official. He left two months ago, so my division has been working with a very low capacity. But having said that, and I will mention a few of the items that I have sent to you. I am here at the direction of council. If you need to change your priorities and you tell me, Yolanda, don't do any more fire rebuilds. Those 10 till 6 o'clock helping out people. I certainly can follow what you want me to do. My time right now currently is taking a lot from the homeowners that are still not getting, so getting frustrated, it's took three and a half years. Some of them still have problems with connecting their gas lines, gas meters, electrical meters. I am the conduit that is there to get them in touch with the different companies or utility companies. I'm sorry that I let you know everything that I were working on, but for me, it's important for you to tell me what is my priority here. I have reviewed the Marin County that was introduced. I have researched the document. I have talked to multiple jurisdictions in our area, not in Northern California. And none of them are pursuing this. I contacted Agora Hills, I contacted Calabasas. And I agree with you, this is great for the environment and myself being your environmental sustainability director, it's great. I just think it's a huge undertaking for, and I don't have that capacity.
But I say Mr. Y, I appreciate your comments. I just want the council to know that we're getting far beyond far down the road and it's not, so I appreciate your comments. Just wanted to make that point.
Well, thank you for the update, Yolanda. I think, I think I think we get the point there. And as you know, I appreciate you very much and I thank you for your important. You didn't mention also, we're missing a few extra other bodies in the planning department as well. So, which I know. So to that group, I still want to continue to learn. And I know we have a plan, we're going to get together. I love where this is going. I just want everyone to understand, we do have a bandwidth issue. We have to, that we are working on solving and it's not going to be solved overnight and it's just, it's a reality where we are. And the last thing on a comment, a few speakers talked about fire rebuilds and some issues there. Mr. Ureans brought up some concerns in the past. I don't, I'm sure if this is the exact same thing or not, or it's sort of related. But obviously that's something, if we need to, we should talk about. It seemed to be more related to basements tonight, but maybe there's more to it than that. Then there's something about 40% building 40% more. So maybe I just need more information on that one. So thank you to all the speakers though, a lot of speakers came out. I appreciate you sharing your concerns and your thoughts on everything. And those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. I see that Bruce has his hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Paul. I figured I'd let Karen have the last word tonight since we seem to be going out of normal order. And I think having the last word is always helpful. So, you know, my wife asked if we're going to have a long meeting tonight, one of these midnight, one o'clock or a shorter meeting. And I said, you know, it's just going to depend on the public comment because it's a pretty light agenda. But you know, it's going to depend on having people come here and criticize me or having people come here and support me and criticize others. Because that's kind of what takes up most of the public comment, unfortunately. Substantively, the Yolanda, the fire rebuilds, Woolsey Fire rebuilds, you're doing a great job. And stay focused because that is the priority. In kind, plus or minus 10%. We want our primary residents who lost their primary, who lost their primary residents to get back to their home. And that's my view. Any other environmental matter or development matter, as good as it may be or as important as it may be, doesn't surpass or take away from getting people back into their lost homes. That was one of the things, it was one of the reasons I'm here and that's critical. And I just stay focused, which I know you are. You know, Friday, I watched the White House reception for Justice Katanji Brown Jackson and it was just, it was a wonderful event. It, you know, it's a token of how far we've come in this country, but it's really all it is. We still have a long way to go. And then Saturday I went to the Chumash Days powwow. And it was a marvelous event, but you know, as I was, as I was there observing it, I was thinking to myself, here's our indigenous people and they're completely underrepresented, if not unrepresented in our government. So still have a long way to go. But you know, it was a marvelous event. I was honored to be able to be there. And I encourage people to go there next year, year after. It's just a wonderful event. It's very important to the indigenous people who go there. It's from all over the country. It's an intertribal powwow. And can learn a lot and have a good time at the same time. And I was, I was surprised that Mikey wasn't there and I didn't know why. So Mikey, my condolences. I knew there had to be a good reason, but I didn't know what it was. You know, I did watch that video, not the excerpts of the video that were shown earlier by the Ides and talked about by Joe Drummond. But I've watched that whole meeting a couple of times, trying to understand what's going on with this two-step rebuild process where you start out with it in kind, plus or minus 10%. And then all of a sudden you've got a house that's 140, 150% bigger than the house that burned. And a lot of times you're not the person who lost the home, you're an investor. And I still can't figure out how we got there. I mean, I heard also, you know, a garage, a pool, but not another floor of a house, not another half of a house. And that's what's really been, and that's what's been going on. So I've asked, I asked many months ago for data on that. How many, how many of the rebuilds have taken advantage of that and how many have not? What was the first one? What was the second one? How many have there been? I still haven't gotten that information and I know, I know the staff's, staff's underwater. So I'm not complaining about that, but it's something we do need to get on top of. The STR ordinance, I guess when it comes back, we can talk about that. I continue to believe, as does Bill Sampson, who's expressed this many times over the past few years, we really need to just start enforcing our zoning law. You're not entitled to conduct the business in a residential neighborhood. And that's what STRs are. We don't need a new law. We just need to enforce the law we've had since cityhood. I've been working, among other things, very hard for the past two weeks with the city attorney's office on a lawsuit that was brought by the owners of the Malibu Beach Inn Hotel, who are trying to get another bite at the apple to have off-site parking at the Hertz lot across PCH. They didn't get it from the planning commission, they didn't get it from the city council. So now they're trying to get it somehow from Superior Court. We'll see where that goes. The Low Carbon Concrete Initiative. And I agree with Yolanda, I agree with everyone, it's an important thing to be looking at. And we've got other important things, unfortunately, that we need to be looking at, again, getting people back into the home they lost. But one thing, I'm always skeptical when all I hear are the positives about an initiative. So maybe, maybe all there is is positive. But I suspect, well, actually, go back, when we talked about Westwood Beach last week, one of our residents talked about, and I agreed, the importance of studies and data. And you know, it's good to log things, but we are going to need studies and data to adopt any kind of an ordinance. And more importantly, or equally importantly, we need to hear from the other side. We need to hear the arguments that are being presented by advocates in both directions that we can figure out where in the middle the truth lies. Because that's, that's how you find out, because we just get the surface of it. We don't know the details. So I, I'd like to hear the competing arguments so that I can then understand from those arguments what makes the most sense. Lastly, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but you know, I this issue of Burt Ross and Lance Simmons, so to say, first of all, Lance, I was so glad Doug brought that up because I wasn't going to say a word about something that just happened to be written to the Malibu Times and isn't here. And Doug's got a marvelous voice. I hear him, I think he could sell ice to Eskimos. I mean, he's just, he's just that kind of person. He's so smooth. But you know, Lance wrote in his article, or I'm sorry, in his commentary that I had said that democracy should, needs to be torn down before you can make progress. And that the city council needs to be torn down. No, I didn't say any such thing. That was a response to comments about the loss of the city manager and the city attorney and whether we were better off or worse off today than we were then. That's all I was talking about. Anyone that wants to go back and watch the recording can see that. And you know, I get it that you've got a bunch of people working together who come here and they have one thing to say after another. And it's all, it's all pre-orchestrated and you got that right to do that. And it's fascinating that the same, the people who come in here and take an hour of time speaking are the ones that say, we're wasting our time on incivility and non-professionalism and we need to get our job done. You know, and one resident, Ellie, God bless you, 90 years old, longtime resident. He said, if you don't have something good to say about someone, you shouldn't say anything at all, that all you did was complain about me. So, you know, I just find that interesting. Mr. Ross, Mrs. Ross, actually, I never said the words, I wrote this down, corrupt motives, please find them and show them to me. Didn't say them, didn't write them. But you know, what I did, first of all, I didn't know Burt Ross from Adam before I ran for council. And my first real introduction to him was on March 28, 2021, when he wrote a guest column, his column to the Malibu Times attacking me. So he did, you can go look at it, Burt, and read it. Never had a word to say about Burt before that. And the words I had to say last time, which were again, also in the paper. He talked about the fact that he's got a right to write to the paper. Yes, he does. I've got a right to write to. He said that I'm quoting him now. I've lost the quote. Oh, that we have, that if people don't speak up, Malibu will be governed by people whose hatred has no bounds. And he was referring in that quote, because you can go back and watch the recording. Who he was referring to was Georgia Goldfarb, Suzanne Goldman, Bill Sampson and Joe Drummond. And that was why I took it upon myself to write in response to that letter and to defend the residents who Mr. Ross had, in my view, brutally and unnecessarily attacked. So that was the basis for that. I've not been in civil or unprofessional in these meetings. But you know, just like Burt has a right to write to the paper and say what he wants, I have a right to write and say what I want to. But in any event, I do hope that we're going to continue to go to have civil meetings. Unless, you know, Mikey, there was, there, next meeting, I'm going to be appointing Georgia Goldfarb to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And Ms. Goldfarb had raised a complaint, which was consistent with the complaints that were voiced by residents about her removal being discriminatory. As I've said publicly numerous times, I didn't subscribe to that belief. I don't believe it. And because I'm appointing Ms. Georgia, she's agreed to withdraw that complaint. And there would have legally been required to be an investigation. That's the way the law works. So, you know, so I'm being so in civil that I've managed to find a way to avoid an investigation. So I'm sure nobody will appreciate that, but that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get us to work cohesively. And I've already said too much. I didn't plan to say very much tonight at all before 10 people or so came. Anyway, thanks for the time.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, I think that takes us to the consent calendar.
No, Karen.
Karen, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Paul. Well, how have I been spending my time? We had, as interim city manager McClary indicated, a school district separation mediation with SMMUSD. As he explained, the discussions of that are privileged. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank Deputy City Attorney Christine Wood and the entire team on separation. That was a very, very long day and we've got more work ahead of us. For the first time in three years, we had an in-person library speaker series event in conjunction with Pepperdine University and the county library. Melissa Stallings and her team. And it was a fascinating address by a Brown University author and Professor Elizabeth Rush on her book called Rising: Dispatches From The New American Shore. It's a study on climate change and sea level rise. And she goes to four distinct communities and takes personal testimony from people in each of those communities on Staten Island, in the Bay Area, in Northern California, in the Mississippi Delta area in Louisiana and in Florida. Highly recommend the book. I'm looking forward to reading it myself. I want to thank everybody at Pepperdine University who helped this happen and hosted it. And everybody at the library and particularly Kristen Riesgo and Christine Shen from Community Services and our environmental sustainability department. Also, for the first time in three years, as you've heard, we had the treat of hosting another Chumash Day. It was definitely an honor to be there with Native American tribespeople from not only all over California, but many from out of state. And there was an incredible turnout. I really want to thank Jesse Bobbitt and everyone from the Community Services Department. It was a lot of work and it went so smoothly. And I look forward to attending next year. After that, I also went down to Big Rock for the introduction and community address by Acting Captain Joe Fender. And I want to thank him. And a lot of good questions from the community and I agree, that's a great thing to do. People might want to think about hosting something like that in their own neighborhoods. Let's see here, I do have a question if Lieutenant Waters is still in the meeting or anyone from the station. Is still in the meeting or anyone from the station? I'm just curious about the RVs that were towed. If they were uh within the city limits or if they were in the county area. Does anybody? Here in the meeting know the answer to that?
It looks like Chad Waters has left the meeting. We'll try to unmute uh Joseph Fender to see if he might be able to help.
Okay, thank you.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can hear you.
Uh, I believe those RVs were the county area. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent certain. But I believe they were in the county area, and I will double check that for you to make sure that that's an accurate statement.
Okay, thanks so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, either way, uh, in my opinion, it's going in the wrong direction. Excuse me, in the right direction, getting uh. Unlicensed or illegally parked vehicles off the road, off the highway. Um. Let's see here. I am, I am disturbed by the attack on our staff members tonight by a member of the public. Quote, planning department is working on the sly. By all means, Joe Drummond or anyone else. Look into that. I would like to hear the facts on that. Uh, if anybody from planning. Or the building department would like to comment on that, I'd love to hear from you right now. Richard Yolanda. Any comments?
Richard.
Councilmember Fair, uh, we're glad if to look into anything. If someone can point out an instance, I'll be glad to to research it and. You know, if there's a public records request or whichever that would help, be glad to do it.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Uh, anyone else, Yolanda?
Yes, good evening. Again, uh, we stay with the code and um. After the projects are approved by the planning department. Our building and safety is staying within the local uh and state regulations. We're following exactly what. The state of California is requiring in those instance, but if there's anything that. Um, that we can look up or provide you with more information, I'll be happy to do that also.
Thank you, Yolanda. I appreciate that, and I'm sure Mr. Drummond does as well. Uh, let's see.
Councilmember Fair, I did notice Captain Fender raised his hand again.
Oh, sure. Excuse me.
Can you hear me, ma'am?
We can hear you.
They were in the city, so I apologize that I was incorrect, but they were in the city.
Right.
Even better news. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to be accurate.
Thanks so much. I think I speak for everyone when I say we appreciate that. Um. Let's see. I guess uh, that's it for my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I believe that brings us now to the consent calendar. Have any items been pulled from the consent calendar?
Yes, item three B two has been pulled by the public.
Okay. Would any members of the council like to prove pull any of them?
I move to approve the consent calendar uh with the exception of item three B two.
I'll second.
We got a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item three B two. Any discussion? Kelsey, will you take the role, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It brings us to item three B two. And you um. Is the member of the. Public available to tell us? What their concern is?
We have one speaker for this item, Ryan, and we'll unmute him now.
Uh, yes, I wanted to uh ask you to remove only one item from this uh payment uh register, the warrant uh list. For the city, and that would be check number six, five, four, eight, seven. I've received an email from the city treasurer asking for one more day to check into the matter. Um, this is a twenty five thousand fifty six dollar proposed refund. To um. A transient occupancy tax, uh probably a bed and breakfast or a short term rental or something of the sort. Because the address is two, 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 oh, something Pacific Coast Highway. I. I note that as a beachfront address, and I did send all council members an email about this just before the meeting. Um, that this refund needs to be consistent with the city of Malibu's. Um, municipal code that requires a hearing. Before a refund of tax, and then the city also has some other issues that um. Uh, sets a statute of limitations on how far back you can go and contest some uh tax. And I did not receive response um related to the substance. From the city treasurer or from the city attorney. Either Trevor Rusin or John Cotty. And I don't think um it's fair to have them opine on something that can, you know, to have time to to examine either. So I would suggest you subtract that amount uh from the approval of your warrant register tonight. For check number six, five, four, eight, seven, be excluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there uh any? Is interim Assistant City Manager Quinto available?
Yes, good evening. Um, mayor and council, and I apologize for my Zoom screen. I um have been trying to figure that out this evening, but I I was unable to do so. In any event, I hope it brings a smile to some folks' face. Um, I did receive an email from Mister Embry last night at about six P M. And um, today uh we did have A N F, and I just have not been able to provide all of the accurate information that was requested. Um, however, I I did touch bases um and uh with my staff, and we do have. Um, a very strict ordinance that we are following and um as um. Member Pearson mentioned earlier, a and a lot, an electronic system that makes it um. Quite accurate to not only trap um and and uh record, but to be able to go back and take a look. We just didn't. Uh, we ran out of hours in the day today. So with just um receiving that email last night. Uh, I didn't want to um respond without a complete picture. So I would recommend that we move forward. The the warrant um has uh been released, and I'm confident in the. Accuracy. However, if there is an issue, we'll follow up and um certainly we'll uh circle back around with counsel. Uh, with the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce?
I I read the give and take between Ryan and Ruthie before this meeting began. Um, and you know, I I I've said before, I I appreciate Ryan's diligence. He he examines. Everything he he might work harder than some of us on some of these things. And sometime and often he raises really good points. Other times it's a fail. In fact, there was another one that he gave up on, which I thought was a fail. So I I applaud him for letting that one go. Um, I gotta learn that sometimes. But in any event, I was going to suggest after reading the give and take that we um. Approve the warrant conditioned on Ruthie being satisfied within the next twenty four, forty eight hours. That that payment was appropriate, not hold it off, but just leave it to her to be to become satisfied afterwards. And if she sees a problem with it, she can come back and tell us. So I I'd like to propose that slight amendment to the um proposal by staff to approve the warrant, which is approve the warrant subject to Ruthie. Examining that one item and becoming satisfied that it was appropriate.
I'll second that.
We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Kelsey, will you take the role?
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It brings us to item four A. Which is parking citation fines. And. Can receive a report.
Hey, well, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, so tonight this item is presenting two separate recommendations from the Public Safety Commission, but they're being brought. Together because they both involve updating cities parking fine schedule. Uh, at the November uh twenty twenty one Public Safety Commission meeting, the commission performed its annual review of the city's parking citation fine schedule. And at that meeting, they took two actions. Uh, to make recommendations to the council, one regarding the existing parking fines. Uh, whether and to increase some of those. And then the second recommendation had to do with creating. Excuse me, a new fine for an ordinance that did not currently have a city fine schedule assigned to it. So uh, starting with the existing lines, there were fourteen codes that the commission. Identified for increases and six of those for substantial increases. Up to a hundred and fifty uh dollars due to their public safety impact. These violations were identified for increases based on input from the Sheriff's Department and the volunteers on patrol. To their uh, they're the ones out there and making these citations. Uh, Parker, can you show us slide one, please? Thank you. All right, so here's a summary for our audience to uh see what the different uh citations are. And as you can see, the latter order of increase, some going from thirty eight to fifty eight, some going. Excuse me, fifty eight to ninety eight. And then there's six that are going from anywhere from. You know, uh, forty eight to a hundred and fifty, some there sixty eight to a hundred and fifty. But those six were identified due to the public safety impact. And in some cases, the prevalence, especially if you look at fire hydrants. There were one thousand four hundred and thirty three citations written for fire hydrant. Violations. So subsequent to that meeting, uh, when staff went back to start, you know. Doing the staff report with the council, we learned additional information that needed to be considered. Um, so it was brought back to the commission. Uh, for reconsideration. That information included the fact that fines served perceived as too high. And disproportionate to the offense are frequently appealed. And when the citations are appealed, it doesn't incur additional staff and contractor costs. Uh, also, sometimes uh, some of these violations, if compliance is the goal, sometimes just better signage. Can be more effective than a higher fine. And there are some cases where I think some better signage could help or markings, especially when it comes to fire hydrants. Many of the fire hydrant citations people uh. Appealed because they said they did not recognize the fire hydrant as a fire hydrant. Um, also, California Vehicle Code stipulates that, to the extent possible, issuing agencies within the same county shall standardize parking penalties. Therefore, the city has traditionally tried to be consistent with the Los Virginas uh Parking Authority, which includes the cities of Los uh. Pardon me, Agoura Hills, Hidden Hills, Westlake Village, and Calabasas. However, uh, as you know, coastal communities deal with different problems, so those cities don't always. Apply to the situations we're facing. So staff also looked at some other coastal cities. Uh, next slide, Parker. So other coastal cities we looked at included like Santa Monica, Antura, Newport Beach, Manhattan Beach, and granted Newport Beach is not in L A County as. Suggested by the California Vehicle Code, but we were trying to look at other coastal communities that are dealing with similar issues as us. Uh, generally, we found that there would be at least one other city that also seemed to have this problem and had a higher fine. For some of these uh violations. Next slide. So those were all the ones with fifty eight. Here's three, they're going to ninety eight. You can see uh Monterey, Monterey was also one of the other cities. They actually. For the eighteen inches from curb, uh, they charge a hundred and twenty five dollars. So that must be a rather big problem there, Monterey. Uh, next slide. So for the ones that are suggested to be increased to a hundred and fifty. There were a couple other cities that seemed to have a similar problem. Manhattan Beach. For disconnected trailer, they have a hundred and forty nine dollar fine. Um, Monterey again had a hundred and twenty five dollar fine for fire hydrant. So. It seems like there's always at least one other city that it must be a problem for them as well, which is why they probably increase the fine. Hoping to, you know, if it's repeat offenders, if they get the ticket once, they won't do it a second time. So then um. This, so we got all this information, then also in doing some research, I came across a court case in July twenty twenty, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Affirmed in the case Pimental versus City of Los Angeles, that parking tickets and fees must comply with the U S Constitution Eighth Amendment ban on excessive fines. In that particular case, uh, this regarding sixty three dollar parking meter fine. And in the end, uh, the court, you know, cited that the sixty three dollar fine was appropriate. However, uh, the court did use of four uh factors in making decisions, and I thought they were very helpful when evaluating. Uh, citation fines, one being the nature and extent of the underlying offense. Another one, whether the underlying offense related to other illegal activities. And whether other penalties may be imposed for the offense. And the extent of the harm caused by the offense. And I think it's this fourth one that the commission. Was. Feeling very strongly about that in many of these cases, it was the extent of harm or potential harm. Of the offense that they were concerned about. Therefore, we we brought all this information back to the commission on January fifth to re review. Uh, their recommendation, and on that day, they reaffirmed their original recommendation to the city council. Uh, then in March, it was brought to the administration of finance subcommittee. Who also weighed the pros and cons and all this information, and in the end, didn't make any changes, but voted to have it brought to the city council. For a full discussion of whether, you know, if these fines seem appropriate. So, you know, in the end, I would just say about these that. We're not making or the commission is not making these uh recommendations lightly. There was a lot of thought and research. And discussion put into these particular recommendations. Then in addition to this, at the November commission meeting, when they were doing the review of parking. Parking citation um fines, they also voted to recommend the city council establish a fine for violations of the Malibu Municipal Code. For oversized vehicle. Uh, Parker, next slide. So for some of you who were around during the time in twenty seventeen, the city adopted an oversized vehicle ordinance, ordinance number four twenty seven. Um, afterward, uh, we needed a C D P in order to install a regulatory signs. Unfortunately. Due to some delays related to concerns expressed by the Coastal Commission, the C D P was not adopted by the Planning Commission until January of last year, twenty twenty one. Um. So the signs have been installed, but then we were informed that there was no specific fine schedule. For this ordinance, which needs to be done according to our municipal code. The Sheriff's Department has been enforcing the code, but usually under the code for failing to obey signs, which is a seventy three dollar fine. Um, since the illegal parking of oversized vehicles continues to be such a problem, both the commission and staff believed that an escalating fine schedule for these violations. Of oversized vehicles may help discourage repeat offenders and encourage compliance with the ordinance. So the recommendation is, you know, first violation, a hundred dollars, second violation, two hundred dollars. And then for every uh violation after that, five hundred dollars, and this is within a one year period. And that concludes my report. I'm uh available for questions.
Thank you very much, Susan. And.
Mayor, if you're ready for public comment, you do have four speakers for this item.
We'd love to hear from them. Who do we have?
They are Chris Frost, Eric Previn, Howard Redski, and Josh Siebel. We'll hear from Chris Frost first.
Thank you. Chris, are you available?
I am available. Good evening, staff and council. Um. And and you know, first of all, as Susan pointed out, uh, Malibu has a unique perspective. In this area because we are a tourist driven town on many days of the year. And uh. The amount of people driving around and trying to park. I I'm not sure how many times it goes up, but it's tens of thousands by the end of summer. So anyway, the traffic fines in Malibu need to be increased in relation to the huge increase. So anyway, the traffic fines in Malibu need to be increased in relation to the huge increase in the number of visitors we have and a patent disregard for many of our ordinances and laws. Each of the fines here that have a recommended increase to a hundred and fifty dollars have safety consequences. Unattached trailers, especially those parked in the center of PCH, represent a stationary hazard that can cause a serious and/or fatal traffic accident. Parking in front of fire hydrants or in fire lanes needs no explanation. Parking on sidewalks needs adjustment as well, especially since the, uh, the ADA access on Point Doom is that DG sidewalk that they tend to park on. Sending a clear message to those who violate these ordinances by increasing the fines will be self-informative as social media picks up our crackdown in these areas. And further towing off of sidewalks and in front of fire hydrants will submit the message even further. At six thirty on Sunday evening, there were at least fifteen vehicles on sidewalks or blocking streets and driveways in Western Malibu. The current fine structure for the oversized vehicle ordinance does not deter those who persist in camping on PCH and on our streets in the city, or worse, living there permanently. The current fine, which is written under failure to obey signs, is seventy three dollars. Those that receive that ticket will pay just, will just pay it whenever it's slapped on their windshield. It's half the cost of the Malibu RV park and less than the state park. But the big advantage is they can stay right on the beach and take parking spaces for lengthy amounts of time for next to nothing and also present a clear health and safety hazard. One RV on Corral has been there for two-plus years. There's several others at various locations that have been here one to two years or more. The new fine system will be set up the same as the county camping ordinance, first defense a hundred, second two hundred, third and subsequent five hundred. That means in three days, they could rack up eight hundred dollars. That will send a message, and if they stay away a month and then come back, they're going to get a bigger message, another five hundred for each ticket. I'm sure that will have the necessary effect of reducing the RVs. I support the fine increases across the board and will let social media help us to make for safer streets. And by the way, fines are generally appealed because people just don't want to pay them, whatever they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Our next speaker is Eric Previn, followed by Howard Redsky.
Mr. Previn, are you available?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Well, this is a complicated issue because obviously the impacts of a lot of, of vehicles cause, you have to do some enforcement, and I agree. Um, the thing that I want to draw attention to, though, is the fifteen hundred or fourteen hundred high, uh, fire hydrant citations. And nobody's going to argue that, you know, being in front of a site, uh, fire hydrant is an appropriate thing, and it does sound like a public safety hazard. But, but let's be honest, okay? I've been here for a very long time. The city of Malibu, um, ought to be ashamed of itself for not putting a bloody sign up so that we don't keep tagging families who come to visit our community and park what they believe to be legally and get a nasty over what the appellate court said was a reasonable fine. I mean, I suppose, uh, you know, a meter is different than a hydrant, so you can jack it up. You probably look very closely at what will a court say. But still, think of the impact. Think of the impact on people who are already hammered by so many expenses, including gasoline. Come to the beach in the county of L.A. and the greedy supervisors had the gall to charge twenty dollars to park in a public parking lot down the way in Malibu. I mean, it's outrageous. And so, you know, we should let people know what's fair so they don't get nailed. There's nothing worse than a dad and his kids, and they realize, oh, fuck, you know, here's a hundred and fifty dollars. Ah, where am I gonna, that was gonna be for your birthday present? And if they knew, they would never in a million years, in a million years. I spend a lot of my time warning people, saying, come on, don't, don't park there, you can't. And they go, thank you so much. You know, people are reasonable. Angelenos are decent people. They don't want to be, uh, blocking you in. Now, obviously, I can feel the blood boiling for people who are impacted by raging assholes who put their trucks right in front and the motorhomes and so on and so forth. But let's try to find a way to be fair. Let's post signage so that people understand they have a fair chance, okay? You could read my article on something called citywatchla.com. I write there twice a week a column, and I address this issue, uh, and I published it in the Malibu Times last, uh, year. But for some reason, the new management seems to have disconnected the links, which I find very disturbing. I'm going to call them tomorrow and find out if that's just an accident. But anyway, I also published in City Watch, so enjoy it. And you can read also about the tragedy that we're experiencing now. And I look forward to talking to Joe Fender more about it. I know he's been running around at public appearances, but we've been under siege in our neighborhood, uh, by people who seem to be, they feel they have some permission to do all sorts of things, and the law enforcement says it's a civil matter. Talk to Malibu City. Well, we'll go down and talk to Malibu City and find out. I don't understand. It sounds like the permit department down in Malibu City's been depleted. Well, we have to watch out because these people who come in from out of town with endless supply of money, and we've got
Eric, that's your time.
People giving permits without any kind of, um, clarification. We need real public scrutiny on what's going on in Malibu.
Eric, thank you.
All right, I appreciate it. Sorry for going on.
Our next speaker is Howard Redsky, followed by Josh Siegel and Ryan.
Howard, are you available?
Mr. Redsky? I am. I'm in full support of this. If we're serious about public safety and we're serious about the highway and we're serious about giving the fire department everything they need to put out fires, we should support this. And we should also support staff. You know, anybody that makes an allegation should have to back it up or apologize. This is getting to be bullshit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your brevity, Howard.
Our next speaker is Josh Siegel, followed by Ryan.
Mr. Siegel, are you available?
I am. Thank you very much for having me. Um, I missed the beginning of the meeting, so, uh, I hope I didn't miss anything crazy. I'll go back and watch it tomorrow. But, um, I completely agree with, uh, Chris Frost. I think he said it all, um, so I won't take too much time. I just want to remind everyone on, on the council that, um, most, the vast majority of these tickets are written on Pacific Coast Highway. And when we're talking about, um, obstruction of a roadway, it really, really adds to the, uh, hazard element, especially on the busy days. People are looking at the ocean, they're looking at the pretty girls or whatever, and they just don't see a car that's sticking out. Um, you know, furthermore, in a lot of cases, people will just park wherever's convenient, and they'll just write off the cost of a ticket, um, as just the cost of going to Malibu. And, you know, we've lost control of the highway. We've lost control of how many people come and, and visit us. It's, it's really time to, um, you know, put some sting in people's wallet who choose to violate the law. Um, I also want to mention one thing, you know, um, a lot of these, a lot of this fine structure that, that we looked at, um, I was looking at, uh, Beverly Hills, um, fine structure. They, they have, uh, tickets that are far more expensive than, than we even wrote, um, or, or suggesting. And, um, and they also tow. So that's just one extra thing to think about. We're not gonna, you know, we're gonna try and tow, but we're probably not going to. Um, and at the end of the day, we also, uh, looked at this carefully, um, uh, with Lieutenant Brayden, he, before he, he left to, uh, fix his hip. And, um, you know, this was very, very carefully thought out, well researched, and it came to us twice. We all voted for it, and we really look forward to you approving this tonight and not bringing it back and, uh, costing more staff time. So thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Josh.
Our next speaker is Ryan.
Hi, Ryan.
Are you available?
Brian, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Okay, yeah, it just came up, okay. Um, I, I think you need to, uh, have your, um, commissioners identify whether they're speaking for themselves or trying to speak for a commission because the commission report was given by the city staff member. And, you know, we need to be, uh, clear about that. I would suggest that you not impose flat hundred and fifty dollar fees across the board, as was shown in the slide. I think you need to have a very thoughtful basis and formula for your consideration tonight. So I need to, to specify what that is. But I also want you to clarify, what is the one-year period you're talking about? Is that the city's fiscal year? Are we talking about a calendar year? And how are you going to enforce that? Because you can get a, uh, exchange or license plate at the California DMV five days a week, if that's what you're trying to do, and it certainly is less than the price of a ticket. So the compounding, uh, that you were proposing there, um, you know, are we, are we going to trace it all back to vehicle identification numbers? Because, because that's quite a headache. The city of Malibu proposed a double fine zone, uh, probably ten, fifteen years ago, and it was determined that that was not going to fly constitutionally because it, uh, was oppressive to the underprivileged and the poor. And so in light of that, which I, I think the Public Safety Commission did not consider and that you as a council really must consider if you're going to try and uphold these fees and not refund them all, you know, a year from now. Um, let's use the formula. As I said, the average on that chart, and you can approve a formula and have the staff crunch the numbers, or they can do it right now. One of them can start doing it right now for you. And that is one point three times the average on those, that comparison list or the highest on the list, but no higher. Let's not stick our necks out, um, and, and be the targeted city to, to have these, uh, fees, uh, determined to be, um, outrageous. So I would caution you not to go higher than the highest on the list. And don't make them flat fee. That makes you a second target for what were you thinking? Make it one point three times the average or the highest on the comparison list. And, uh, to define the one-year issue and whether or not you want to do, um, some other consideration like, um, the double fine zone, uh, in certain districts or areas, like a commercial area or Pacific Coast Highway. And lastly, I wanted to say there are a lot of accessory fire hydrants that are connected to swimming pools. And the fee, the fine probably should not apply to those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
And we have a raised hand from Bill Sampson, so we'll hear from him next.
Hi, Bill, are you available?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening.
To those who asked me to speak earlier, I apologize. You'll feel sorry for me. I was out in the water in Honolay Bay. Um, I heard Chris and Josh on this, and yeah, steep fines are in order. Uh, Eric, I am not unsympathetic to the plight of a working guy who simply misses a sign. Uh, in my neighborhood, that does not appear to be the case very often. There's lots of illegal parking, and the cars frequently are not for people's cars. Unless, uh, unless my cleaning lady is now driving a new Tesla. Um, that said, eh, and I, I sat, uh, as a pro tem in traffic or traffic parking and small claims, and I will tell you that courts are not unsympathetic to those who have problems. I didn't see the sign. The sign was covered by a bush, and there are signs like that, they're covered by a tree. Uh, that's fine. Uh, the old saying is tell it to the judge. Judges are generally fairly responsive to the parties before them. Let's just leave the Supreme Court out of it. But at the trial level, judges are people who deal with people. So if somebody comes in and says, I didn't see it, or I'm absolutely broke, I can't pay it, there's usually a workaround. Um, but an awful lot of the people are simply looking for a place that's probably free to park until they get a ticket. And the cost of that, when they do just, you know, when they do get caught, ought to be steep. The old saying is if you can't do the time, don't do the crime. They've got a choice.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
And I don't see any other raised hands, so that concludes public comments.
Hey, that brings it back to the council. And I see Karen's hand is raised.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, first of all, I just want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and highlight the work of our Sheriff's Department Volunteers on Patrol. Uh, I did some inquiring into this, uh, when this agenda came out, and I'd like everybody to know. In two thousand twenty-one, the VOPs wrote seventeen thousand ninety-two tickets, resulting in one thousand one hundred forty-five, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars in fines. That's just from the VOPs. That's apart from the tickets that the sheriffs write. I really want to acknowledge the work that they do and, while working for free as volunteers, the revenue that they bring. But then it raised another question, and Ruth, Ruthie and I, uh, talked about it this afternoon. Uh, the question is this, how much of those fines does the city get to keep? And I realize it's a different amount, uh, depending on the type of the ticket. I realize some tickets are contested. I realize some tickets take a long time to pay, uh, so it's, it's not easy to, to pin it down to the penny. But I think what we could do is look at how much the city recouped from those totals and maybe look at a few years in a row, get the average, and then we'll know in general what the percentage is that the ci- city gets to keep. So Ruthie, do you mind addressing that?
No, and I, and I apologize, um, for, for trying to weigh in earlier. I just wanted to mention that I think you, you said a hundred and forty-five, but it's one point one four five million.
Oh, if I said that, yes, that's exactly what I meant.
You bet, yes. And we can say, generally speaking, that we collect about sixty percent of the total that is, um, basically written. The, uh, the amount that we keep depends on the violation and the other items that you mentioned, that the timing of collections or if they appeal or what, whatever, uh, that case may be. But, um, we definitely can go back and we can look at a few years. I, it's just the information that we are able to, um, come up with today. And again, it's not, as you mentioned, not scientific yet. Um, but we do, uh, uh, in the past, it's, it's ranged from one point four million to one point seven million. And then we can definitely give a net number on the collections. Um, but as, as we've noted, uh, in the staff report, very difficult to, um, you know, to double, triple check the handwritten citations that, uh, typically the sheriff's deputies write. Uh, but we definitely want to go back and, and take a closer look and, and establish a trend, and then we can, um, report back on, on the revenue generation from this particular change.
Thanks, Ruthie. Um, and I think there's a correction to a public comment made that fees were just raised flat across the board. Uh, that's not my observation. Susan, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure what was implied by that. I mean, they're not flat because they were raised different amounts, uh, based on the public safety, uh, threat that's perceived by the commission, how strongly they felt about that and the prevalence of these violations and the problems they cause.
Okay, thank you. I know we have other comments, uh, coming, but, uh, I think this is overdue. Uh, I do think that our, uh, parking citations need to be more of a deterrent rather than, uh, the cost of doing business that they might be considered by some people right now. Uh, and as we saw the last two years since the pandemic started, we've had so many people parked illegally, blocking driveways, uh, blocking access to fire hydrants. And I think enough is enough, and, uh, I'm really happy to see this coming through. Uh, I know we have other comments, but I would like to make a motion to move staff recommendation and adopt resolution twenty-two eleven. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I will second it with a friendly amendment that, uh, Susan comes back with thoughts on signage, and I'll talk about that in my comments.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and, uh, we're open for discussion. Mikey, you have your hand up to discuss.
Yeah, I, I think this is clearly an important issue, and there's a lot, there's, there's a number of sides to this. There's, I mean, there's actual life and death involved here. When I look at, at the list of the different cities, what I don't see anyone talked about is what's the average speed cars were going on those streets compared to our street? Mainly, we have Pacific Coast Highway. Now, we have Now, we have some other streets, like Point Dume is a great example. With another twist to this, people park there because they know they won't get towed, it's 60 bucks. Totally worth it, the family, go to the beach. We have plenty of incidents from VOPs and others that, like, great, 60 bucks, I'm good with it. So, and then on PCH, obviously, we have cars doing whatever they're doing. The bike lanes right there, cars are parked half in on the ocean side. This, it's a life and death issue. So I agree with what the Public Safety Commission did, and I did spend time talking to a couple of their members about this. But I also think Eric and Susan made a point, we don't want to penalize people for coming to the beach. So we have to be a little bit smart about this and, you know, do it right. So I said, bring back something unsigned, the last thing I want is a sea of signs either. So this is a complicated issue in my opinion, and I think it requires a little thought of how to implement it so it, it's fair, increases safety. And the financial end, yeah, it's great, the city is bringing in revenue on it. But the amount we're spending on public safety far outweighs any sort of tickets that we're receiving money on. So I'm in support of this, and I would just like some more thought maybe on what, and how we let the public know, whether that's signage or other ways. So we're not penalizing people who don't get it and go, going to the beach. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Bruce, you're up.
Thanks, Paul. First of all, I just want to make a side comment about the, the comment somebody made about the staff. Last week, I spent two hours on the, on a video conference with Richard, Malika, and Adrian Fernandez, and working through some, some difficult issues. They, they were great, and the more we talked, the more I could see why perhaps people have a misperception of what's going on versus what really is going on. And we're working on trying to find a way to make sure the perception matches the reality. So I just think that's important to say. On this, you know, we're a lot different than most other places. I don't want to say we're unique, but we're, we're fairly sui generis. We're, we're certainly not like the city of Los Angeles or any place in the valley that we might be compared to. And I would say that we're not even the same as the other beach communities. And the reason I say that is we're a town of 10,000 residents, and we get 15,000, 15 million visitors. And our entire, you know, we're a thin part of the coastline, we don't go, we don't go inland very far at all. And our entire city is beach and residential and rural. And I don't know where else is like that. So to compare the fines in other places to the fines here is, it's apples and oranges to a large extent. That, that's one high-level issue to think about. The other is, we also are entirely a very high fire hazard severity zone. We've talked about that with other matters. No other city on the coast can say that. And I don't, it's nothing to be proud of, but you know, that's just nature, that's, that's the way we are. Now, the fines, this should not be revenue-driven. I, I, if anyone thinks this is revenue-driven, I disagree with that. I'm not sure, I don't think anyone in council is going to say that. This should not be revenue-driven, it should be safety-driven, personal safety, and importantly, fire safety. So I look at these things that we're looking at, that we're on the list as kind of two separate categories. There's the bureaucratic stuff, and there's the real safety stuff. Now, you can make an argument for safety for the bureaucratic stuff, license plates, I mean, you know, law enforcement needs to know who they're dealing with. We track license plates, we've got, we had that on the agenda once. But when it comes down to rest taxes, the, the very first seven, eight things here, they're ministerial. And if this is not revenue-driven, you know, don't even mess with them, they're fine. I, we, we need to show this is not about making money, right? But when you go down the list, and when you get down near the bottom, these things are serious safety issues. And for all the reasons I articulated a few moments ago, we are in a situation where our safety is a much more difficult matter. I mean, imagine, you know, knock wood, we haven't had the situation. Imagine we have a wildfire on a, on a beach day, and people are parked, obstructing PCH. And people are parked in front of fire hydrants, that's just a recipe for disaster. And that needs to be prevented at all costs. So I think we could be doing much more with the fines respecting fire hydrants, fire lanes, obstructing the roadway. And we could be doing a lot less on the stuff that's, who cares? I mean, you know, it, it, you need to have a law, but who, but who really cares about those things? And we're not trying to stop those things from happening with our fines, we're just punishing people if they don't obey the law. Those are my general comments. Let me look at my notes. Oh, so I also, I like the oversized vehicle concept of the increasing fines. I, I don't know why you get 24 hours when you're told to, to vacate a spot before you get fined again. I would think that if you don't move within an hour of being told to move, you're ripe for another fine. And that's another, and that's both a fire issue as well as we need to make room for people to be here. So I've, I questioned the 24-hour part of that, but I, I totally agree with the increasing fine issue. I'd like to see that with respect to the camping too, the camping in vehicles. We, we have a law, it's the same law as the oversized, oversized vehicle, same concept. It's to stop people from living on the highway, and we could be doing that as well. We could have the same fine schedule for that, I don't know why that's not part of this. So I, I'd like to offer, I mean, this is, it's kind of complex, but I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, I don't know if I have any takers, to leave the fines for the first, the, the, the $38 fines, leave them alone. I'm not, we can talk about the ones in the middle, and then the one you get down to the bottom, I'm not concerned about a constitutional challenge. I mean, if you're parking in front of a fire hydrant in a city that is a very high higher, very high fire hazard severity zone, you get fined $300 or more. We want to stop people from parking in front of fire hydrants, we want to stop people from obstructing the highway. And, you know, if, if Malibu were a building, we, we would be passing our occupancy maximum, maximum whenever people come here. We, we don't need to make room for more people than ought to be here. We need to make room for a reasonable number of visitors, and 15 million in a small town like this is not reasonable. We're, we're a destination, and that's great, but people need to recognize that there's a limit to how much room there is for people. You, if you come here early, you're going to be able to use the, use the city park. But if you don't, then go park some, go somewhere else where there's parking. It's that simple, there's, there's a thousand miles of beach, go somewhere else. You don't need to illegally park in Malibu just because you prefer to be in Malibu. So I'd, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, I don't know if I got any takers, to leave the $38 fines alone, maybe cut the difference in half for the $58, $48, $58 fines, and dramatically increase the other ones so that we can actually accomplish safety.
I, I would agree to dramatically increase the other fines if Susan thinks that they are justifiable. But I am not in favor of not increasing those $38 fines at the top of the list.
Well, just as I said, they don't, I'd love to increase all of them, but I think that we demonstrate that we're not trying to use this as a revenue tool by going after the ones that really matter, and then down the line, addressing the other ones if need be. That's, that's the only reason I say leave them alone. If anyone's concerned about a challenge, take care of the ones that matter for safety, don't deal with the ones that don't matter for safety. We already have fines, we already have a law, that was the reason for my, my thinking of leaving them alone and increasing the others. I'm all in favor of increasing as much as you can, but there needs to be a balance.
Well, I think, for example, front license plate, that, that is a safety issue, and that does help the sheriff identify who they're dealing with more easily. Incorrect registration, I think that speaks for itself. I mean, I'm just not in favor of not increasing those fines. I think those do help law enforcement. And Susan, I don't know if you want to comment on what I would, I think we would all consider the more serious fines farther down the list.
I would recommend that you don't go higher than 150, and we can see how it goes in the next year with, if we suddenly have a spike in appeals, or if it's working, if it's helping. I, I would recommend cautiously going up with a, the commission will evaluate these fines in another year, they do it annually. And we can really look a little deeper on these two, get more data to really do a thorough analysis of, you know, how well they're working to discourage people. So I would not recommend going higher than 150 at this time.
Thank you.
It looks like, Steve, you're in?
Yeah, I agree with Susan. We, we went through this pretty good detailed administration and finance committee meeting. You know, what, how, how we're going to justify the dollars that were put in there, and there was a lot of concern raised about, you know, what's going to happen when a judge looks at these amounts compared to someplace else. So I think we're, right now, the right move is to go with what we got. Let's see what happens over the course of the next year, and we can always go back and crank them up next year if we think there's an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Steve. Well, in driving on the highway on Sunday alone, I saw three of the $100, $150 fines that deserved to be $150. And it was, there was some ridiculous driving out there and some worse parking, including double parked on Carbon Beach with people backed up. On Zuma Beach, I saw people parked in the bike lane, the bicyclist came down, had to come out into the traffic to go around it. The one place in Malibu where they don't need to be in the traffic lanes most of the time, had to do it because somebody was parked in the bike lane. I'm very much in favor of the motion, and I'd like to have Kelsey take the role.
And Councilmember Fair, I just wanted to confirm, did you accept the friendly amendment from Councilmember Pearson to direct staff to bring back recommendations on signage?
Yes.
Excellent, then we can take the vote, Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
I guess half a loaf is better than a loaf, so I'll go if yes.
Mayor Gresanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to 5A. Is there an appetite for a 10-minute break? It's after nine o'clock. So we're going to do a 10-minute break, it's now 9:13, so if we can meet back here at 9:23, I will be very grateful.
Cameras and microphones, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Rob.
Hey. Steve's back. Mr. Cotty's back, Mr. McClary's back. I think we're ready to begin again. Thank you, everybody, for your promptness. We are now on item number five A. And we want to apologize for Rob for not being able to finish this one the last time around. So I hope that you can, uh, you're going to give us an update on Los Angeles County Measure R and Measure M transportation funding.
Yes, and and I'm, I'm shocked that it's only nine thirty because usually my items are like eleven. So, um, it's, uh, it's early for me, so I have to wake up a little bit.
Keep up the good work. We'll make it even earlier next time.
Exactly. No, no. Good evening, council. And tonight I'll provide another update on the Los Angeles County Measure R, Measure M transportation funding. And also, uh, the federal infrastructure grants. Next slide. I'm going to give a little update on Measure R and Measure M funding. If if, uh, if you recall, uh, both of those funding mechanisms had a one cent sales tax to every dollar that is spent within the county. That additional funding goes towards transportation related projects, uh, primarily on PCH and our canyon roads. Um, Measure R was approved by the voters back in two thousand eighteen or two thousand eight. That part of, uh, the funding provides the city about twenty-six point three million. And that funding runs through twenty thirty-eight. So far, we have spent, uh, the lion's share of that. We have approximately about four million left with with Measure R. Measure M was a, an additional funding source that was, uh, approved by the voters back in two thousand sixteen. Um, that one doesn't have a sunset date and will, uh, last as long as the measure is still valid. I provided you a, an approximation about how much we receive. We're going to receive about forty-five million within the next seven years. And after that, we'll receive an additional funding, so, um, that is a funding source that is quite substantial, that can, that we can use to do transportation related projects. These projects, uh, need to be submitted over to Metro for for approval. And then, uh, a funding agreement is needed between the city and Metro. Next, next slide. After our last meeting, I I actually had the privilege of kind of looking into different funding sources and, um, this big one popped up, uh, the federal infrastructure, um, um, uh, grant program at the federal government, um, was passed by Congress in, in two thousand twenty-one. Um, this funding provides, uh, local governments an opportunity for federal governments for for projects, larger projects to, to, uh, for various types. Um, some are transportation related projects that will, um, that will create safe, safe streets and will provide, um, additional improvements for all modes of transportation. Um, it also includes funding for solar projects and electrical vehicle charging stations. And this is a big one here that I was very, um, uh, interested in hearing is that it provides funding for projects that reduce the risk of disasters. Uh, and I'll go into more a little bit. Why this one's important because this one really piqued my interest and and piqued the commission's interest when, uh, I provided that information. Next slide. So, uh, yeah, before I get to this one here, um, let me give you a little more background. Um, at the November eighth meeting, I I provided counsel an update on Measure R, Measure M. And, uh, the council directed me to send, uh, send this back to the Public Works and Public Safety Commissions to to create a comprehensive, project list that we can use towards future projects, future metro projects and and have that funding available so we can add that to our CIP, um, plan. At the February twenty-third meeting, uh, staff had a joint Public Works and Public Safety Commission meeting. Uh, the Public Safety and Public Work Commission, uh, they worked really hard on providing staff with really kind of, um, a a list of projects and, um, they developed a very comprehensive, um, safety priority list that identified several projects that's included in the staff report in in priority that they feel that that would be an improvement to PCH and Canyon Roads using, um, our metro funding and also the federal infrastructure funding. And, um, this list will will be helpful for me to actually put those projects into our five-year plan and see and how we can implement and get those projects done. Today, I I'm going to go over a few of those projects, the ones that I know that, um, are that that I'm going to be able to actually, if 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 this, if this list is approved, I I'm going to be able to kind of actually move forward on trying to secure funding and get to that point. So first one is the big one. PCH utility undergrounding. This was a big, this was the big one that both commissions have in indicated in for several years that interest to underground, uh, existing utilities on PCH. Specifically, that that we all know that when Edison does the the PSPS, it shuts down power to uh, the traffic signals. And currently we have battery backups and we have generators that do that, but a system that has utilities underground would be a more protective, um, system in place and where we can have more reliable power to there. So, um, this project will underground existing utilities from Topanga Canyon into Tranca, Tranca Canyon Road. That's where we have the majority of our traffic signals and that will provide a more reliable kind of network for power for those signals. I put down here a potential funding source will be the federal infrastructure, um, funding. They have indicated that undergrounding existing utilities would be a mitigation measure to reduce the risk of hazards. And, um, in webinars that I've had with federal governments, I I specifically asked them if that this project undergrounding would be a project that they would look into. And they indicated, yes, this was would be one of the projects that they would be interested in and and seeing and going through the 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 application process. So I put down here, the next steps would be submit an application for for this project to the federal, um, government to see if we can get funding and then later provide an update to council. Next slide. The next project on on our list was the PCH of Lost Flores and Ramble intersection improvements. This is a, this has been notorious, um, intersection for traffic accidents and issues with, um, safety. And, uh, this project will actually improve, uh, this intersection by doing, uh, several types of, uh, safety improvements. And, um, the potential funding source will be Measure R and Measure M. Um, I I currently have been coordinating with Caltrans and looking into different ideas that we can do to implement, uh, changes at this intersection and, um, we'll continue to kind of collaborate with Caltrans and see what what projects, uh, both, uh, the city and Caltrans can can do in this area. Next steps for this one would be to submit this project for Measure R, Measure M funding, and then once again, provide council with an update. Next slide. Next one is PCH improvements from city limits to Cross Creek Road. This project, uh, includes reconfiguring the traffic lanes, um, adding landscape medians and, uh, really improving the bike lanes on on either side of PCH. This section of PCH from the city limits to Cross Creek Road is very congested. Uh, um, there's been several accidents from cyclists and it makes, it's a very dangerous section uh, for for those, for those folks trying to cycle on that area. Um, the potential funding source for this project would be the federal infrastructure funds. Uh, they do have, uh, funding available to to improve safety on on roads such as this, and, um, yeah, and so the the next steps would be, once again, kind of coordinate with Caltrans. I I I talked to Caltrans about this project and they have indicated that they are interested in in collaborating with us to see what kind of, uh, improvements will be that we can do and, um, maybe, maybe work together to create this project. Um, next step too, after that would be to submit this project application to for it, um, for funding through the federal infrastructure to see if there's funding with that. Uh, once we have that, we can kind of, um, provide council more of an update. And and if we have the funding from federal government, we can start the process of of kind of uh, developing a more refined project and doing community outreach and kind of seeing where this can go. Next slide, next slide is kind of a, it's a better, better illustration of what that concept would look like on PCH with, um, a little bit narrower travel lanes, um, the landscape medians, and you can see that there is a, there is a, there is a striped bike lane that will allow cyclists to get there without sharing the lane. Next slide. And this project is a pedestrian signal at two-two-five-two-three PCH. Currently at this, at this, at this location, there's a flashing beacon, um, that where pedestrians cross there and it's not a, it's not a push button. It doesn't hap, it's nothing happens. There's no signal there for pedestrians. It's just always a flashing beacon. Uh, I know several times that I've asked Caltrans to fix flashing beacons because it doesn't work. Um, this project will replace this flashing beacon with the pedestrian signal there. So pedestrians can have a safe access to go back and forth. Potential funding source will be Measure R and Measure M. Uh, I have been coordinating with Caltrans on this project and and will continue to kind of do that. Uh, the next steps here would be to submit this project, uh, to Metro for approval. And then provide, um, council an update on the project. Next slide. Those are the remaining projects that I have kind of like the the main top projects that I've wanted to kind of talk to you about, um, to to and and let you know that I'm, um, those are the top ones that that we would be kind of working on for this upcoming year. What I'm looking tonight is getting direction from council on the safety priority list. If this was a, if this is a good list, is there certain things that you want to move around or is, um, get input and get clarification on, on, um, on these lists of projects. This list, like I mentioned before, this list of projects will help me identify projects for the upcoming budget and will help me plan our upcoming years with most doubt. With that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Rob. I see Mike's hand, Mike's hand.
Yeah, I know we have to go to the public. I just have a a clarifying question. Rob, the first, and I think the first and the third projects you mentioned, the first was the undergrounding with federal infrastructure money. The third was sort of the PCH improvements with federal infrastructure funding. And do you see those as a combined project that would be done at the same time? Because you figure if you're there, you're there maybe, or maybe I'm wrong. So I just, I wanted to understand that. Thank you. And by the way, fantastic work. I'm really fantastic. Thank you.
I I think so. It just depends on the design for the undergrounding and, um, the the work needed to do and and design of the of the street improvements. And if they both meet up and kind of we can do them together, perfect. But knowing how long undergrounding takes, probably not, but, but you never know. It's 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 definitely a good goal or something that we can look into and kind of see and we can combine if it works out well.
Karen, do you have a technical question?
Uh, I'll save it for after public comments. Thank you. Um, before, comment, Mayor Croissant, may I just please weigh in momentarily?
Sure.
Uh, I just want to remind the council that we do have a proposed budget workshop coming up. Um, and that we will have the opportunity to evaluate all of the outstanding cap, uh, capital projects, both disaster recovery as well as the, um, the regular CIP one year. And, um, and then the council will have the opportunity to, again, take a look at the entire program and, uh, potential other priorities that may or, um, may have not yet been completed and or progress made. So, um, while I'm super excited about many of these projects, given, uh, the fact that I do live here, uh, I would just, um, want to make sure that we're not getting too far out in front of ourselves, uh, regarding the entire, the the entirety of the capital project, um, plan. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelsey, who do we have from the public?
We have three speakers, Ryan, Alex Stein, and Bill Sampson. We have Ryan here, so we'll hear from him first.
Hi, Ryan. Yes, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I wanted to, um, commend the amount of, um, projects that are being proposed, but caution the city about not trying to co-fund the state of California on projects that are safety related that need to happen on their highway regardless of any allocation, uh, available to the city of Malibu. The the city of Malibu Measure R and M funds need to be spent on city streets and not on Pacific Coast Highway. We can help identify problems of PCH because we're here and we see them. And that should be a charge of the Public Safety Commission and the city staff. And I'll give you an example, is the right turn lane proposed to go into the Paradise Cove, uh, private road? That was promised by Caltrans three times over the last twenty years and it was on a two-year funding cycle and then it got yanked as soon as Caltrans reps saw that we had money coming in from another source and wanted to to make that happen at city expense. It's like, wait a minute, Caltrans is constantly trying to get the city to co-fund their projects. Um, we need to be on top of our state legislators to make sure that the state of California gives us our due. The gas tax is being spent and this is their highway and the deficiencies when they The gas tax is being spent and this is their highway and the deficiencies when they created the highway that we're trying to correct. Down the road here. Should not come at the expense of the city streets, like the work that had to be done on Civic Center Way in front of the schools, there was no sidewalk. Okay, thank you very much, we finally got that done. Now, here's the other part, is most of the fires that have ravaged through Malibu on the east end have burned through Malibu Canyon, both in ninety-three. And I think in ninety-six as well. It was October fourteenth of nineteen eighty-five also burned in Malibu Canyon. So. The idea of undergrounding some of the wires up in the Malibu Knolls area has a lot of merit. Because the the fires that happened in front of his research and in the Knolls, they burned all the way to to the shopping center and houses on the beach. So. The the project in eastern Malibu, by the way, to narrow the vehicle lanes that are already too narrow. To put in bike lanes, we have to be careful that we don't cause one problem for the motoring public, which is paying the gas tax. To create an exercise track for bicyclists on the weekends that we don't really need and it jeopardizes their own safety. So I I take a hard look at that one, but try to see about undergrounding the power wires along. The fire quarters that have already burned and have burned repeatedly. And that would include the section from the city limits on Malibu Canyon Road. To probably about where they get undergrounded near Pepperdine's entrance at Civic Center Way. I'll end with that, oh, I'm sorry, the two two five two three pedestrian crossing signal. If I run out of time, if I run out of time, please call on me for that one, that was already done twice.
Thank you, Ryan.
Our next speaker is Alex Stein, followed by Bill Sampson.
Hey guys, yeah, I'm here, Paul, you know, I'm never gonna miss a Malibu meeting because my favorite incompetent mayor, but listen, this is a public safety issue and it's sad. Because I know if you guys are in charge of it, people are probably gonna die and get hurt because you guys can't even pick. Who's gonna be the proper mayor of your town, much less put you in charge of making public safety. It is item five A, I'm talking about public safety, Paul, you know, you always give me such an attitude, you know what I'm gonna talk about, you know I'm gonna talk about this thing, it's just because every single word is not about it, you have to get all, you know, your your panties in a wad, relax. Let me just tell you something, Paul, you know that this is a a public road and the fact that you're in charge of a public road, I know that there's probably gonna be a lot of crashes, there's probably gonna be a lot of deaths, I mean, look at it, like, you know, you have the police chief is like. Oh, we're gonna put in speed bumps, we're gonna pull people over speeding, now you know the Pacific Coast Highway is is famous for speeding, you know it's a dangerous road, so if you're put in charge of it. All I'm seeing is death and destruction and you look at the federal funding, yeah, you need all of it that you can get, because why? Because you're so incompetent, you need other people to figure it out. So that's what I'm worried about, I'm worried that I'm gonna be driving down the road and I'm gonna get some sort of mudslide or I'm gonna have some natural disaster and then when I need the mayor, when I need Mayor Paul Grisanti. You're gonna be sitting there and ripping some girl off on some real estate deal and that's how you made all your money, so that's the problem with what's going on. Is I don't trust you guys with this federal funding, because when you have a history of ripping people up, no, this is about the public, but this is about five A, Paul. What I'm saying is you're in, yes, it is, because it's about federal funding, and so I don't trust you, because any access to you have the money, you take advantage of it, you take advantage of little old women. So I can imagine you're gonna take advantage of the federal government, so when I see that you have access to money. I get real nervous because I know your history does not do well with money like that poor little old lady, you took all of her property and sold it for nearly forty percent more. Right after you took it from her, so this is the thing, you're probably gonna do something to the federal government, you're probably gonna say, oh, the problem's worse and then take that money and give it to, you know, some guy in Qatar, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know that if you're running it. I know that these roads are gonna be less safe and I know that I'm gonna be in fear that my convertible is gonna get hit hit by somebody or the road's gonna crack. Lord knows what's gonna happen, but that's the problem, is this federal funding is probably gonna get misused, so really and truly, we shouldn't be using the federal funding, we need to turn down those funds. Because the city of Malibu, we got enough money, but of course, what are we gonna do? We have a mayor that takes advantage of people that have money and you use it for their own gain, so that's what I look at this, I'm just trying to raise awareness because I know this is public infrastructure. And public safety is the most important thing when it comes to your citizens, you want to keep us safe, but at the same time. If your history, you won't even help out some elderly lady, you'll take advantage of them, why wouldn't I? Okay, why wouldn't you take advantage of this system, so listen. The city of Los Angeles County, excuse me, the county of Los Angeles, we know is is has a lot of major malfunctions going on, so Malibu. Getting some support from the county is probably only gonna be even more of a major malfunction, so that's what I'm afraid of, Paul, so I just want you to do.
You have to focus on on giving us constructive input.
This is my constructive input is I think you're too incompetent to figure out this decision, because you guys are always trying to get some third party person to come and get your comments. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Sampson, followed by Joe Drummond.
Bill, are you available?
I'm here. I need to get outside and look at a sunset. However, Rob, thank you much, I love getting all those power lines in the ground and the coax. Why we have coax, I don't know, and the fiber and all that other stuff. At enormous expense, we did it in front of our house a few years ago. We would have gotten more help from Enron if, excuse me, from Edison had Enron not. Basically screwed the state of California and Edison. But we got it down there. Please don't stop at Tranqus. I have only, I admit, I am personally interested. As I live past Tranqus and there are lines right behind my house. I spent more than I spent for a college education, I think. To get the ones in front removed, we took movies when they pulled the pole out. I'd like to get rid of the ones in the back, so please, you know, take it all the way to the far western city line out there. I mean. Yeah. Oh, Rosemary just reminded me, apparently we are part of the city. I need to be corrected by her a lot, but. Please, I don't know, what. Yeah, I I I sort of understand the money situation, it would be great to have it everywhere. That and Rob, there's a visual problem, one visual problem, I think. Somehow making the highway safer is always a good thing, those lanes are already very narrow there. I just hope that the semi in your graphic had a bill of lading for Malibu. Because if it did not, it should not be on our, excuse me, on the state's highway. And I. The sheriff's got more than enough to do, I know, but I hope he gives the guy a ticket. I also noticed, I know, I don't know, what was that yellow car, one of you guys may know, I don't know if it was a Lambo or something. We got now Lotus, I don't know, Paul's shaking his head, he may know.
Dino.
A what?
Ferrari Dino.
Oh, well, hey, I I'm a Porsche guy, how would I know? Anyway, and they're old, I have old ones, but anyway, that's the someone I can be there and. I am all in favor of that pedestrian light being made safer, especially since it's obviously. Again, this is a visual thing, Rob. Your picture shows the one place Malibu has one-stop shopping. You can get weed and booze in the same building. And there's a and you depicted that next to the crosswalk. It might be good, I don't know, Photoshop it or do something before you. Do it, I don't want those pedestrians run over either, by the way. There but for the grace of God go I, but you you might. Change that photo and shoot it from the other direction, because the pedestrians seriously though do need all the protection we can give them. It's four thousand pound dodgeball out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Our next speaker is Joe Drummond.
Hi, Joe, are you available?
Hi, yes. So I was just wondering about the, I'm so glad that you're burying the holes along P C H, Rob, that's amazing. I just wonder, like, I know it's, I think it's only twenty-four to thirty-six inches that you need to dig to bury. Apparently, I'm not sure, but you can confirm. But why why aren't we considering the fire-prone neighborhoods, of course, like, you know. Wherever, like the big rock, of course, and Point Doom and whoever. Why are the the neighborhoods not being having their. Power lines buried because they're. They're a fire hazard, that's the main reason. The other thing I thought when I heard Ryan talk about the crosswalk crossing the liquor store. Is that gonna be a full-blown traffic signal or shouldn't it just require? Just a push button, so not that, not not a sensor that senses everything that moves, which is a push button, so that. When someone is there, it can cross, they can cross safely and not have to stop traffic constantly. I just wonder about that. And if if Caltrans did it wrong, maybe they should fix it the right way. With their own, with their own research or whatever, but. And that's it, thanks so much.
Thank you, Joe.
And Mayor, I don't see any other raised hands from the public, from people who have not spoken on this item yet, so that concludes public comments.
Thank you. Karen, I see your hand.
Thanks, Paul. Rob, okay, I. I'm gonna guess, the two projects that seem like the easiest to accomplish, just as far as logistics. Look like the Rambla-Pacifica-Los Flores P C H intersection. And the Carbon Beach Crosswalk. So. Would it make sense to prioritize those two because they can be knocked off easier?
Yeah, it it's it's, those still need a little work. To get them approved through Metro and so. Part of my proposal work plan that I'm kind of. Giving you a preview of of upcoming, but but yeah, but that's part of my work plan is to. If if that part is approved, then it's getting the paperwork, getting the project approved by Metro. Even if they, even if I started now, it's not gonna be until like November, December until. Kind of Metro does approve that and so we'll know more by. The end of the year where we are with those projects. Definitely, the the other ones are a little more ambitious and and kind of. Need need federal approval to get going on it, the metro ones are a little bit easier to get approval, those I have a better understanding on, so. So it it's this upcoming year, we'll be working on trying to secure funding for those.
Okay, because I. Just looking at this, you've got so much going on, it's 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 daunting to even. To even consider much less. The fact that you're trying to get it all done, I I would be in favor of making a motion to. Prioritize the two easier projects. First. And I realize the funding sources are different, but but undergrounding P C H. And the improvements. You know, along so many miles of the highway. Is there a way to kick those off at the same time, but but just knock off the easier projects?
It it's, so can I make a suggestion? It is, I have that. The Public Works and Public Safety Commission spent a lot of time getting to the point to where. They've prioritized projects based on that on that safety priority list they have in the in the staff report. From that list, it is, I will take the ones that I could actually fit and actually work in my work plan. And and have the staff resources to do those, I will develop in that, so that list is really helpful for me. To develop and and have projects kind of lined up and ready to go, so let's say I I go through and I. Get a lot of it done. I can jump on to the next projects on that list without kind of. You know, hey, what do I want to do next, it's just, it's already there, I can just kind of move on to the next one, and and so. Prioritizing the metro ones over the other ones. It's it's all the, it's. It it's gonna start the same time, once I've got some feedback from council, if that list is good and. We'll start the process, it'll happen at the same time, it'll just mean that maybe Metro will be easier to to get to that finish line before the other ones, but. The it they will happen at the same time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, so I I will make a motion and I know that people are waiting to speak, but I will make a motion to go with your recommendation. As described in this presentation. With the with those five projects that you outlined.
Do I hear a second? I see a second, Mikey Pearson.
Second, thank you.
Okay, discussion. I'd love to lead off the discussion then. Rob, I I know that you're, what you're doing here is you've got a lot of different funnels. And you're trying to put everything in the funnels and and then you'll work with what comes out the other end as quickly as you as it does. And. I I think it's it's good planning to have a lot of projects in the works. And and hope that. You know, and as you're responding to their questions, you're gonna help get the things through the funnel. And I have great confidence in you and I'm gonna. Recognize Steve since he's raised his hand.
Hey, thank you, Paul, I just want to say, Rob, you know, this is. Good work. I think you've got. Right items on your on your list. I think you got a lot to do and I think you you have demonstrated your ability to get a lot of this stuff done over time, so. Thank you very much for what you've done, I look forward to having you move forward on the stuff as the mic comes rolling in, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm kind of excited to kind of. Go for these, this is a good shot, I mean, this is a good chance to kind of do it, there's there's money available. Let's go and try to get it.
Good. All right. Seeing no more hands raised. Kelsey, would you consider calling the roll?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It brings us to item six A. Opposition to county ordinance allowing low-impact camping in environmentally sensitive habitat areas. So I don't. Who's gonna be presenting this, is that you, Richard?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Malika.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, what you have before you this evening is a draft of a letter of objection. To be sent to the County Board of Supervisors. On an upcoming topic they'll be discussing on the nineteenth of this month regarding a. An amendment that addresses low-impact camping in Escha areas in 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 outside the city here. As part of their local coastal program amendment. This item, as I mentioned, will be discussed on the nineteenth, the staff report for these county supervisors is not published. Until April the thirteenth, so we did not have the benefit of seeing exactly what's gonna go before them on the nineteenth. However, given the the history behind this, the previous comments from the Coastal Commission. Staff felt that it would be good to put together a letter reiterating the city's previous stance, a similar letter. Was sent, I want to say around twenty nineteen, it was signed at that time by Mayor Jefferson Wagner. Staff did receive two pieces of correspondence with some additional information. From members of the public that they wish to have added to the draft letter. I believe those two individuals may speak this evening as well, but we do have a copy of their language, so if it is the council's wish. We can incorporate their comments into the letter and and get this draft sent to the county supervisor. I'm available for any questions. As well as our consultant Joyce Parker Bozelinski, who has been following this issue and working with me on it, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Do we have members of the public?
Yes, you have eight speakers signed up, our first you are E. Barry Haldeman, Lloyd A. Hearn, Rick Mullin, and Doug Stewart. We'll hear from Barry Haldeman first.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine, Barry.
Okay, first of all, I wanted to thank Richard Malika for an excellent staff report and if you read it, you'll you'll be up to speed. The Coastal Commission and the M R C A are urging the Board of Supervisors to allow overnight camping in Escha areas of the Santa Monica Mountains. It's a terrible idea because of the fire implications that it will create and the environmental damage that it will do to Escha. The city of Malibu has been against this from the beginning, as have a number of us who are concerned about fires. Even before us, the citizens of Ramirez on their own dime sued Coastal over this amendment. And they won, they were told by the judge that the amendment did not comply with the Coastal Act. So the Coastal and M R C A and Sheila Kewell have now come back with an amendment that they feel should be passed. And it will be heard as you heard on the on the nineteenth, we understand. Coastal has proposed a number of rules which allow flameless camping, whatever that is. Overnight in Escha. You have to register, you have to only have four tents, you can only have twelve people, you can't have open flames. However, with all these rules and regulations, the MRCA and Coastal refuse to commit to patrolling the areas to enforce the rules, even on red flag days. So they can have all the rules in the world, but if there is no enforcement, what are they worth? So the MRCA claims that they have now complied with the judge's orders in the Ramirez case, but they've not even put this in front of a judge. So in addition, there are many things that have occurred since the night, two thousand fourteen Ramirez decision. The Woolsey Fire, the loss of eight hundred and, four hundred and eighty homes in Malibu and the effect on thousands of family members. The fact that for the Public Safety Commission, over thirty fires have occurred since the beginning of this year caused by campsites of transits in the hills. The fact that we are in the worst drought in a hundred and, drought in a hundred and twenty-eight years in California. Esha should be protected and people should hike through them, but this is a crazy idea to let them camp. So we, we, just because they can do it, doesn't mean they have to do it. And we urge the city and everybody to show up virtually and object to this because we're gonna get the blunt of the fires that are created by somebody who likes a cigarette or wants to roast marshmallows on a real campfire in the Esha areas. And, and the fact they won't even patrol them is an indication of they just don't care. So I'm happy to, I sent a letter with additional comments. I'm happy to talk about any of them. They're in the public record.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lloyd Ahern, followed by Rick Mullin, Doug Stewart, and Alex Stein.
Hi Lloyd, are you available?
Lloyd, she should get pop up asking unmute.
Is it unmute now?
It's unmuted.
Okay, great. My name's Lloyd Ahern and I wanna speak about the chronological order of this adventure that we're on right here. Back in the two thousand fourteen time, a state agency came into Ramirez Canyon and there was a pretty much of a dust-up and Ramirez took them to court and a judge Chalant ruled in their favor. And it was pretty well settled down. Then two thousand, November ninth, two, two, twenty eighteen, the Woolsey Fire hits. Okay, biggest fire in the history of Los Angeles County. And we're in, you know, shock for months. And all of a sudden, the county comes up with an idea that they wanna have unsupervised camping in the Santa Monica Mountains right behind Malibu. As Bruce said earlier tonight, we're real, real thin. But all those mountains right behind us, they catch fire, it was right down to the highway. So we went down to City Hall and, I mean, to a certain Board of Supervisors with about thirty-five people. Now you can tell how agitated we were. Anybody that's ever been to this County Board of Supervisors is a tough place to get downtown. And we got thirty-five people to speak and we started asking that, you know, how come Esha, which was the Holy Grail, is all of a sudden now allowed to be camped in? And what about supervising these fires? So they, Janice Hahn asked the question to Sheila Kewell, why would you not have a ranger on the days of red flags? Well, that was the loudest silence you ever heard in your life. You couldn't answer that question. Well, it went back to the County Board of Supervisors Law Department and they came back and said, this thing isn't gonna work without supervision. Now we get to COVID. We get to now, and all of a sudden, there's a whole new plan that doesn't match anything that was said before. We need to go back to the drawing board with these people and figure out what do they want? How do we do this safely? Because we can't be playing these games all our lives with, with the danger. This is a waste of their time and our time. Because this thing that's been submitted to you tonight is really not gonna pass the so what test. So I hope you, we figure a way that we can all work this out between all the agencies and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Our next speaker is Rick Mullin, followed by Doug Stewart, Alex Stein, and Ryan.
Hi Rick, are you available?
Yep, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, thanks very much for your service to the community and thank you to the full-time staff for their service to Malibu. I would just wanna say I appreciate the city's engagement on this issue and for agendizing it and with a, with a draft letter. I submitted a letter of suggested modifications to your letter. And just to turn the Wayback Machine, I was the one who went to the Coastal Commission meeting in two thousand and four to oppose this, and that was the beginning of this whole evolution. And my organization, you know, has been in court on this. And I think we're the ones who know the most about it. So my recommendation to you is that you should modify your letter to be simple and focused on what I think are the five key issues under consideration by the Board of Supervisors. And those points are camping on red flag days, the county banned camping on red flag days, and the commission, Coastal Mission, would allow the camp operator to propose its own camping regulations relative to red flag days. Number two, campsite inspections. The county required that the campsites be inspected at least once a day, including on red flag days. The commission would allow the camp operator to propose its own inspection plan. Number three, fireproof camping stations. The county did not allow for any type of cooking facilities. The commission would allow fireproof cooking stations. They've described what these stations are in terms of what they are not, but hasn't really explained what they would be. And the confusion, I think, will increase the risk of fire. Environmental protection, the commission proposes that the county cut back the protections the county put in place for environmentally sensitive habitat area. For example, the county would not have allowed porta-potties in the most sense, most, the most protected Esha. The commission's modifications would allow that. The county also banned low-impact camping within one hundred feet of a creek or stream. Commission would reduce that to only fifty feet. And the fifth one is no notice or no public hearings. And given the severe risk of fire, it's important to note that each camping proposal will be subject to notice and public hearing in order that neighbors may participate in the process. Under the county's strict proposal, over-the-counter permits for some of these sites could have been sufficiently protective, but if they're gonna loosen all these regulations and still allow over-the-counter permits, then they've greatly increased the risks. So in short, I really think that the best we can hope for from this Board of Supervisors meeting is that the county just keep the regulations that it has in its ordinance in place and to not approve the modifications by proposed by the Coastal Commission. And thank you very much for engagement on this issue.
Thank you very much for your letter and your service, Rick.
Our next speaker is Doug Stewart, followed by Alex Stein, followed by Ryan and Ted Vale.
Mr. Stewart, are you available?
Yes, I am, Paul. Good evening, council members. I'm Doug Stewart, speaking to you as a twenty-two-year resident of Malibu and as a vice chairman of the Public Safety Commission. On November twenty-fourth, two thousand and seven, at three thirty AM, a fire was started at the mouth of Corral Canyon Cave. It was started by five campers, as the LA Times called them, who had a campfire in a restricted but unpatrolled area of Malibu Creek Park. And it was during Santa Ana winds. The result, ten to fourteen thousand people were evacuated. Seven firefighters were injured, forty-nine hundred acres were burned, and forty-nine homes were destroyed, but twenty-seven more were damaged over three days of fires being burned in Malibu. So LA County wants to now open up these same remote areas to unrestricted camping on the promise the campers will not have open fires, as it is often referred to as cold camping. Fewer restrictions, no patrols to enforce even the minimum of rules, what could possibly go wrong? Well, the California, the Corral Canyon Fire of two thousand and seven, that's what could go wrong. I won't go into detail of Esha concerns or greater damage to an already climate changed environment or the high risk of lost lives for campers, their rescuers, as well as Malibu residents. Others tonight and elsewhere will no doubt cover that. But I will say, this opening to overnight campers of the county, state, and MRCA parklands to the north of Malibu is a ticket to watch Malibu face Woolsey-level destruction as a new normal. The risk posed by utilities is considered unacceptable for fire, but is it okay to have people presenting a higher level risk with the potential campfires? You know the answer to that, it's not. This must now be allowed to be approved by the county. If it is, it must be challenged however we can. We need to send a letter, but let's be ready to do a lot more, a lot more. Thank you very much and I appreciate your service and best of luck tonight, Mayor Grisanti.
Thank you, Doug.
Our next speaker is Alex Stein, followed by Ryan, Ted Vale, and Howard Redsky.
Hi Alex.
I'm here, Paul. You know I'm here. Come on, Paul, don't trip. You know, I'm always gonna be here for you. You can count on me, just like the mailman. You know, I'm always gonna deliver except for on Sunday. But let me tell you something, this is why we need to approve it, because we might as well literally just let a bunch of homeless people go up there, because you know, we know most of the people out there are strung out on fentanyl. And so I'm sure they're gonna follow the, you know, Esha rules and they'll definitely listen to the no burn site, because these people aren't smoking crack pipes, they're not smoking cigarettes. And honestly, really, at this point, it might be good if we just had a big fire and just wiped out the town of Malibu. I think it was like five hundred houses burned last time. We might as well just burn up the whole city and we can build it anew, because I know you guys love new infrastructure and love building new buildings. So that would probably actually benefit you in the long run. You'd be able to get some sort of new real estate buildings, you'd be able to build, you know, whatever you want. Lord knows, you'd probably get it to pass, because even you said that you could basically get any legislation passed through the city council before you're even a mayor of Malibu. So listen, let's just approve it. Let's just let the homeless people run wild, smoke their cigarettes, smoke their fentanyl, and, and get strung out, out there in the woods in their tent cities and just burn the place down, because at this point, we have such lack of leadership, I think that that would be the only thing, is to just burn it down, start from new. And then we can actually maybe have some, you know, civility still in the city, but sadly, that's not gonna happen until we get the people that are making this terrible town like yourself and making these terrible decisions. Well, that's what I'm saying, Paul. And see, you know, I like you, Paul. Honestly, I, you know, I give a lot of grief to a lot of people and you take it better than anybody in the world. You actually are a pretty professional guy. I gotta give you that, Paul. You do, you don't lack professionalism. You got that backwards and forth, so I do have to applaud you in that. But still, at the end of the day, we know that if we do pass this, there's just gonna be a bunch of bums out there smoking cigarettes, causing more fires. And we know that the drought that we are currently going through makes us very susceptible to wildfires. So listen, you guys pass it, you don't pass it, really, it doesn't matter, because we're basically in some sort of dystopian nightmare right now with our leadership in Malibu. So for me, it's like, man, okay, it gets passed. You know, like I said, the city burns down faster. It doesn't get passed. It's only inevitable where, you know, a natural disaster causes a fire, and then when we need you the most, you guys are gonna sit there and be like, oh, we should hire outside third party to make our decisions for us. So really and truly, we just need to actually take some accountability with this issue. We need to obviously make it so people can't camp out there and get high and drunk and burn down our city, because you know they're smoking synthetic weed. You know they're, you know, strung out on pills, because that's what's coming through the border. You look at the border between Ukraine and Russia, they're gonna talk about that all day long. But they don't talk about the border between California and Mexico that's flooded with sex trafficking and drugs. And that, and they go straight to places like these camping sites, where they know there's no cops and there's nobody to actually enforce the rules. So this is actually a dangerous issue. So this isn't just some throwaway thing. We actually do need to watch this, because it will be taken advantage of by degenerate people, and it will end up burning down the city. So with all that being said, you guys know the decision to make. And Paul, I like you more than you think. You're pretty, you're tougher than I thought, bud. So keep up the good work, even though you're doing terrible.
And you're doing much better on that one, on sticking to the point. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ryan, followed by Ted Vale, Howard Redsky, and Bill Sampson.
Hi Ryan, are you available?
Yes, I wanted to say, I'm very much aware of all these fires, including the one at Corral Canyon. That one, I think Paul can corroborate the out-of-towners that came, two sets of them. The first set, I believe, was the one that stole the firewood from out in front of Ralph's Market and went up to beyond the city limits, up Corral Canyon and started a bonfire of sorts. It, it doesn't really matter what happens after that. It started a fire and it was a windy night and it, it burned down, you know, tons of houses in Corral Canyon. So, and Paul, I, I think you could say, what, you woke up at like two, three o'clock in the morning? And had to go outside and start four o'clock in the morning? It came to your house in Corral Canyon? Okay, so what, you probably had to get a fire hose. I don't think your house burned down. If I recall, you just defended the yard, I guess.
It burned down.
Your house burned down in that fire?
Yes, it did.
And you were standing there in your PJs.
It's a very pretty picture you paint, Ryan, but no, we were, my wife and I loaded as much as we could in our cars and got out of there.
Okay, and you were Public Works Commissioner at the time, if I recall?
I was not.
So let me ask you, that fire, which started in county area, what if it was a campsite? How would it really be any different? They had a fire, it got out of control and it ended up burning toward the beach, as they all do. So any of this proposed camping in the Esha areas outside the city limits or just outside the city limits in most of the cases here puts the city at a terrible risk of peril. And we have a track record that we don't need to explain this. Why county, and I'd like to know what we did that really pissed off Sheila so much. Why does she not care about Malibu? That was not a four-letter word. I think that was a six-letter word. But my point is that you probably need to put on a agenda to establish a litigation budget for this item. And I believe the letter you're proposing is to be written to the state to not allow the LCP amendment. Is that correct? Or are we just writing to LA County in protest of something you're about to do anyway? Is that it?
Yes.
Yeah, I figured. Okay, well, I think you ought to write to the state and the state legislators that supposedly take care of Malibu and our Caltrans and highway of all its needs, and make sure that this doesn't happen. And nothing would be better than to commit a war chest to this issue, because I can't think of anything else that can polarize and all of Malibu on, on.
Thank you, Ryan.
We have Ted Vale, Howard, followed by Howard Redsky and Bill Sampson.
Hi Ted, are you there? Okay, I'm unmuted. Yeah, Ted Vale, forty-eight-year resident of Malibu. I just wanna say, however, the speaker before, who was throwing out verbal diarrhea at you. Why do we have to listen to this stuff from a druggie or a drunker and insult you and, and waste our time? Can't you cut people like this off? Okay, now my comment about, I was there when, when Sheila Kewell introduced the resolution and we and, and Janice Hahn popped up and said, wait a minute, we have to have some protection in campground areas, and it passed. The Coastal Commission then delayed and delayed and delayed, and I understand they're gonna propose that they do no walk-around, nothing. I proposed in, in your letter that it have two things. One, absolute ban on campgrounds being open in red flag days. Failing that, a mandatory walk-around on red flag days at night when the fires are gonna happen. Put that right up front in, in the letter. That will help, I think. And we've got something after the Woolsey Fire, for the Coastal Commission that I've dealt with back to the nineties. When I was in the Planning Commission and they ignored Malibu, they can no longer ignore Malibu anymore. They've got to, they've got to, and the county, Janice Hahn and the others have got to step up and say, we insist on this. It's our county, it's, it's our cities. And, and we, we have to have protection of the public and the homeowners. Thank you, Ted.
Our next speaker is Howard Redsky, followed by Bill Sampson.
Hi Howard, are you available?
Oh, there, sorry, it pops up a little late.
You gotcha.
I agree with what most people said. I think we have to take the action of the letter, but I think or I know we're gonna have to take some stronger action after that, because I believe they will ignore us. And to add to what other people have said on Escondido Beach that Joe has managed to get some rights to, I took pictures last weekend. Somebody started a campfire in the wind. They cut a hole in the chain link fence. And there's no patrols, there's, I, you know, since Joe's had some involvement, there's never been his people on the beach doing anything, so. And, you know, and again, I'm, you know, I'm glad what Bruce said about Richard. And I also wanna make people aware, look at Yolanda. A picture's worth a thousand words, look when Richard speaks during a planning hearing. You know, how he tries to do everything the commission wants, the coastal, the council wants and what the people wants, he tries to make it work within the rules. So anybody that says, you know, either one of these people or anyone else is doing anything illegal better just say exactly what it is or shut up and apologize. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Redski.
Our next speaker is Bill Sampson.
Welcome back Bill.
Bill, is your microphone covered possibly? You're hard to hear.
Let's see, can you hear me now?
Much better.
Oh, sorry, I just for the record, Paul, my wife pointed out to me, if it ain't red, it ain't a Ferrari. However, um, Ted, my friend, we served together on, what was that thing, Code Enforcement Task Force a hundred years ago. I, I, I didn't invite Alex Stein, I don't know him, I just know that if you think giving a microphone to someone in Texas is a good idea, listen to the collected wit and wisdom of Ted Cruz. Moving on to the real topic, can any of you tell me of any piece of property anywhere that Joe Edmiston has control of that has been patrolled or cleaned up or taken care of in any way? I already know the answer, you can't, neither can I. This is a problem, I do everything you can on this, I think it was, um, I think Ryan suggested a litigation budget, I suspect he may be right, I hope not, uh, litigate. Litigation's expensive. I never figured out a way to make it less expensive for people when I really wanted to. Uh, but definitely, definitely, uh, talk to these people, um. My daughter's thirty-six years old. She would doubtless disown me if I went car camping with her and she could not have some oars. I wander around in the back country and, you know, with a self-contained stove and in most areas I don't even use that. I, I really go cold and I gotta carry all that stuff. Uh, and it doesn't taste very good. I guarantee you, these people, if you go car camping, they wanna have some some oars, they're gonna do that, we know that, I know it. Uh, I've been in areas where you cannot, you're not supposed to have anything flammable at all, you can't have fires, you can't do it. People do it anyway, in areas that are hard to get to. You know, you, everybody has to carry it in and some of the people still build fires. Uh, which is inconceivable to me. But this stuff in an Esha, oh by the way, there is nowhere in the United States of America, which I am aware uh, where it is permissible to camp within fifty feet of a water course. You, it is, most places it's a minimum of a hundred or two hundred. Um, and those of us who are responsible campers try to make it even more. Of course, we have to carry literally everything out, and I mean everything. Um, and these people aren't gonna do that either, they're gonna set fires, do everything you can, I appreciate it. Um, that, um, I suspect we're all on the same side on this one, thank you.
Thank you Bill.
And Mayor, I don't see any other raised hands from the public, so that concludes public comments.
Okay, we're gonna return to the council and Bruce's hand is raised, Bruce.
Thank you Paul, yeah, I think we're all gonna be in agreement on this one. Um, so I'm usually opposed to us sticking our nose into things on the basis that, you know, we've got our own lane to stay in and we don't wanna make it look like, um, we're just being, um, nimby and, um, who cares about Malibu, but, but this one's us because as I said earlier, and as we all know, we are entirely a very high fire hazard severity zone, so much so that both the county and we declared an emergency a few months back, that you just couldn't be in those areas. Um, it's insanity to let people camp in an area that Mother Nature is saying stay away from, I mean, so, you know, it's legitimate to say that people should not be able to camp until the globe decides, until Mother Nature decides that this area is gonna be safe again, that may never happen, or maybe it will, but we didn't cause this, we Malibu didn't cause this situation, it's a global problem and it is very, um, acute in these, in these mountains here, because they burn, they burn down very easily. So I, I think we should be stepping up on this one, we should be making our voice heard and our, and our position known. Um, I thought Rick had some really great ideas, I mean, by the way, I was really glad to see a letter, a draft letter, because it gives us something to, to use and to shoot at. Um, but I think Rick had some really great ideas and just as I sought to draft, uh, Bill Sampson a few weeks ago to help with a letter that he had some, um, input on and passion about, I wonder if we couldn't, um, draft Rick if he's willing to, um, to help revise this along the lines that he suggested, because I think his ideas are very good. This is also something we definitely need our lobbyist involved in. And this is something that I agree with Ryan, it's, you know, saying to the county, don't do what you're gonna do is not gonna get us anywhere, that's just, that's just talk. If we really wanna stop this, we need to go to people that might actually listen and do something, and that's at a higher level. Uh, and I wouldn't be opposed if there is a legal basis to argue about this, and they got, I think they were stopped once. If there is a legal basis, this is the kind of thing that I think we should be considering whether we need to go that route because again, this is, this is about whether we are gonna burn down again. Um, we've got enough problems already, and you know, I, I've, by the way, before I've, I've commented in the past about Alex Stein having some interesting observations in the past, tonight, way out of line, I mean, nobody wants Malibu to burn down again, that's just insane, I don't wanna hear that from anybody. So I think those are my remarks, but I, I, I really think we need to tailor this more along the lines of what Rick suggested, he focused right on the, right in on the problems, oh, but both Rick and the draft, we have the, the concept of a very high fire hazard severity zone isn't mentioned in either place and, you know, that is that's, that's what distinguishes this area from, not from everywhere in California, because there's plenty of other areas in California that are, that are like that, but we are entirely very high fire hazards severity zone and it's crazy to let people have a shot at burning us down again. So th- those are my comments, I, I support writing the letter, I don't support this particular letter because I agree that it's a little more complicated than it needs to be, I like Rick's nuances. Um, and I think we need to do more than just say to the county, please don't do what you're gonna do because the county does what it wants to do without regard to what anyone tells them.
Thank you Bruce. Karen, I see your hand.
Yeah, I have a very hard time picturing anybody on this council, uh, being in favor of what the county wants to do. Uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the county board of supervisors opposing the proposed camping or the proposed LCPA amendments, but, um, I think Rick, I think Rick is on the right track, um, he's fought this battle harder than any of us, I think both as a Ramirez Canyon homeowners association president and a local fire captain and a former council member and mayor. So, um, Richard, are you, there you are, um, is this something that you and Rick would be able to work on together and come up with a new draft?
Certainly, I can, uh, connect with Rick or Joyce, one of us can, uh, within the next day and work on a new draft.
I, that seems like the way to go and I, I think, uh, the council, uh, other council members, I would assume are thinking the same way, um, yeah, I think the very high fire, high very high fire hazard severity zone needs to be included. And everything that we've heard tonight, the drought, uh, the Woolsey fire, uh, the lack of, of, uh, patrols. It's, it's all got to be in there, um. I too have a very hard time understanding why the county would wanna do this. Um, and, and I was one of those people at the board of supervisors meeting whenever that was two or three years ago. Uh, we, we all spoke and it completely fell on deaf ears. So I think the strongest language possible is what we need here, so that's my motion.
Also Karen, and I see a second from Mikey, Steve Euring.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we can get any support from the fire department. I mean, the, you know, the, I can't remember what his name is, the, the guy's head, head of the fire department, I mean, he's, yeah, he can't be happy with this idea. Uh, and you would think that they would have a voice is gonna be, they gotta listen to, right, I mean, um, so I'm just wondering how we get in touch with him and see if we can get some support from that side.
Rick certainly knows them.
Yeah, I, I maybe Rick knows how to do that, I mean, or his, maybe he's already done it, I don't know, I'd sure like to see them sign someplace and have their signature on a letter or, or on the statement that says, we don't think this is a good idea.
I suspect politically that might be hard, but he's in Malibu Chief Smith, so he can't, Rick would be the one who would understand the politics and all of that around that.
Rick, are you there?
Yes, I am here. And I'd be happy to work with Richard, uh, to come up with a better draft and, um, you know, I can put on my civilian only hat and give Chief Smith a call and see if he has any awareness about this.
I think that'd be very helpful.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that. I actually spoke to Susan Dwayne yesterday just to see if, if she had been in touch with him about it or if they had any awareness and I don't think they I'm unaware of if they do or not, but I'll, I'll give him a call.
Cool.
Thank you, by the way.
Thank you Rick. Bruce, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, just one small point that I forgot to make before, which I, I think, I, I would propose that the drafters of the letter consider is you know, there are, there are real campsites all over the place here, it's not like we're trying to stop people from coming to the mountains and, and camping overnight and then hiking around during the day. It's not critical in a very high fire hazard severity zone that they be able to go off and camp in the woods and just as they, just as well as they like, we have camp, we have campsites that are fire safe, or at least, you know, much safer, they're, they are controlled, they've got fire pits, they can use those campsites. Th- th- this is kind of just like people that are looking to park where they shouldn't be parking, people don't need to be camping until the situation is better under control.
Thank you Bruce. I'm gonna take a moment just to comment, uh, as, as Ryan pointed out, I own the house that was lost in the two thousand and seven fire in Corral Canyon because some people decided it would be a great idea to steal some beer and buy some other stuff at the market and then go up and, and go in the cave at the top of Corral Canyon and light a fire in a red flag zone day. And then when the sm- smoke swirling around the inside of the cave got too thick, they testified at court, I was at every day of their trial that they thought it would be a good idea to throw the, the wood out of the cave because the wind would put it out. There is no shortage of idiots out there and there is no substitute for having someone actually come by and check campsites. I was there also at the, uh, board of supervisors meeting and got my one minute to talk before Janice Han pointed out that there was some insanity going on. And I, I can't weigh in strongly enough that I think you're on the right track, Richard and Rick. And I would love very much to see this happen and I will definitely be watching that meeting and attending and testifying in favor of having supervision and no camping on red flag days and please stay out of the Esha. So Barry, I see your hand is raised, is there some, something you needed to add?
I just, I just wanted to add a couple of things, one is, um, I also sent a letter to Richard which I copied you all on with some suggestions for the letter. But one of the things I think this is, we should keep in mind, it's not just patrols on red flag days. We should ask for patrols all the time because the, you know, here but the grace of God goes another fire just because it's not, and we just got a warning today that the, the wind's gonna be fifty-five miles tomorrow. You know, an hour or so, so I would suggest it, and I'm happy to help in any way I can with, with helping craft the letter as well, since I was the one who raised the point about walking through, about patrols in Esha, that Janice Han said, gee Sheila, is that true? And so, um, it's a very, very important point. And what the, what the MRCA said is, they couldn't do it because A, they didn't have enough staff and B, some of the areas were too hard to get to. Well, they're not too hard to get to for, you know, people who don't have a place to live and wanna quiet place to have a campfire, so, and I absolutely support talking to the fire department. Uh, and I think that's an important thing, so thank you very much for doing this and I ask everybody to hone in and appear before the board of supervisors and complain. Thank you.
I don't think I'm taking much of a risk by saying, let's call a question, so. Kelsey, are we available?
Yeah.
Can you take the role?
Councilmember Fair.
Could we have, could we have the motion repeated so that we know exactly what we're voting on?
Sure.
Yes, I believe you're authorizing the mayor to send a letter to the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors opposing the proposed I, I'm sorry, you're directing staff to work with Rick Mullen to draft a letter and authorizing the mayor to send it to the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors opposing the proposed LCPA that would allow camping in environmentally sensitive habitat areas.
Thanks Kelsey.
And I believe Rick, Eric, Richard already has a copy of, uh, Barry's letter as well, so.
Are you ready for the roll call?
I'm ready.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Unless I've missed something.
Motion to adjourn.
But we have two people we're supposed to adjourn in honor of.
That's correct, so we're adjourned in honor of Mikey, would you like to do it?
Elaine Pearson.
Karen?
And Inga Bunbok.
Thank you. Right, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.
Guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's reprehensible. I don't think a group therapy session is going to exonerate you from what the three of you did. And it's, what you need is an intervention. And this is not council training, I don't believe that the funding category is appropriate to be used for this purpose of what really needs to happen.